Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. So we have our biggest audience in about seventeen months. So, and I thank you all for coming. I'd like to make a few adjustments to the agenda. If I can pull those up. So because we have a large audience here, which I will make the assumption that you're here to discuss item 621, which is a reduction of paraeducators. I would like to move that to be right after John's presentation as that would be action item, or that would be item 4.2. And then everyone who's here to speak for that can speak after that presentation because that presentation will inform us of the situation surrounding that. So then, that will be 4.2. Anyone who's here to discuss anything other than 6.2.1, or in response to 4.1, you can speak at 3.0, which is Audience and Communication. Does that make, is that clear? Okay. Another adjustment to the agenda is we will have an executive session at the conclusion of the meeting to discuss inputs to the review of the administrators. So, Anna Lane will come down and meet us for that. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda that are, anybody have anything? Okay. So pursuant to my earlier comment, is there anyone here to speak about something other than the administration recommendation? And Elizabeth, this is the opposite of what I told you. Alyssa, sorry.
Alyssa, yeah, that's okay.
But this is the opposite of what we spoke about on the phone. So, hearing nothing, we'll move on to 4.0. And John?
Okay. So, have this up here. Let's see, I think, actually, it's okay. Will I just sit? I kind of feel like I can't even stand my behavior way. So, yeah, we wanted to open this presentation, kind of talk about the MTSS multi-tiered system support by hopefully linking it back to two previous presentations that you saw. So you'd seen a presentation by our K2s about all the work they're doing kind of in primary instruction and presenting all that material, especially around literacy and math. We saw that. Then you saw three fives. And would like you to think for a second, what do you do when you think a student isn't getting it in a big way? Think back to your schooling experiences. And what happened, I'm sure it wasn't any of you, but maybe it was Alan who sat next to you, who you just knew, oh, that test wasn't going good. And time after time after time, Alan wasn't being successful in whatever subject. What's the school system to do? Just think for a second. Ideas? What do you do?
I would say individualized instruction with that student.
Okay.
Working on their specific needs. Trying to bring them up to their, their level of achievement.
Okay.
Understand what that level of achievement is.
Yeah. Who might, who might give that individualized instruction, Kathy?
Who might?
Who might?
Um, I would think that it's probably not the regular classroom teacher because the regular classroom teacher is, has a lot to do.
Lot to do.
So it would be a para that's in the classroom.
Might be a para. Yeah.
It could be perhaps a tutor.
Mm-hmm.
That is hired by the school system.
Yeah.
To work with that child.
Okay. Any other ideas or memories?
Well, having grew up in New York State, I know that child would probably be, if it was in the middle section of construction, it would then be put into a different section of instruction on a totally different level.
Oh, you might actually go to a different, you might go to a different track.
Yeah.
Yeah. We might have tracking systems, right?
Yeah.
Where kind of high, high, medium, low, and determinations like that. Special educators fit in the picture anywhere in your memories?
Conceivably. But I think also, some of it would be the classroom teacher. I think that the-
The school district and supervisor union have spent a lot of time and money over the last however many years in, you know, professional development or individualized instruction.
Ah, okay. So it might be a team effort.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think if we go back, we can recognize that, I mean, what Kathy described is kind of the model I grew up with. I mean, I was a New York State person as well. You know, and you had, you had the tracking system, you had that. And I, I can remember, you know, students that started in classes and they went off somewhere to work with somebody. Okay? The interesting thing is, and if we can start advancing slides, would you mind doing that now? That'd be great. Because I think what we've kind of described here is a system that educators have used for fifty, seventy-five, maybe a hundred years. And what's happened, I know some of you might not even like this logo. It kind of rankles some folks in terms of no child left behind, a federal intervention, and this 2001 legislation that came, came about that's called NCLB. And a big part of it was, let's analyze our schools and see if they're working. Let's do some testing. Let's do those things. And specifically, we came up with this concept, you might have heard of AYP, annual yearly progress, that we're going to look at schools and see if students are making progress, are schools making progress. And specifically, we started getting this analysis in four categories. Okay? It was kind of some, some new way to look at educational data. Not just are we going to look at a whole school and is a whole school moving forward, but boy, let's look at individual groups and see if they're making project. Let's look at subgroups that maybe live in low socioeconomic status, SES. Let's look at those that don't speak English because it's not their native language. Let's look at those that we've identified for special education. Okay? And, go ahead, Molly, please. And so when that started in 2001, each state said, we're going to set a series of benchmarks, and we're going to judge each school on whether they're making annually progress so we can compare. We're going to put a little bit of pressure on schools because we're wondering if they're doing a good job. And in 2010, for the first time since this process began, my first year here, actually, a specific subgroup, our students who have IEPs, our students who receive special education, it would, we didn't meet the benchmark, and we were identified as a school that didn't make annual yearly progress. Not every school around the country did, but we were identified. 2011, we added another group. Our special education students didn't make that annual yearly progress. And then we added the group that their situation is they're in the lower economic group of all our students. Okay? The reality is that what that kicked in because of the law, this is a law, this is federal, this is, we don't really have an option whether we want to play by these rules or not, is when it continued up until 2013, our school was put on what's called corrective action. We were given some pretty serious choices. One of the choices was you could remove all the teachers and remove all the administrators. Some schools around the country chose to do that and start over again. Thank you. We didn't choose to do that. Okay? What we did choose to do is do an in-depth study and look at our school and compare it to, research has identified seventy-four characteristics that identify what highly effective schools judge by schools that, they're not identified this. They've got the students, but they're doing something fundamentally different than what other schools are doing. And we compared ourselves to that. It was a year long, it was our leadership team, hours of work analyzing our systems, looking and saying, huh, where do we stack up? And out of that, we identified three goals. Okay, Molly? Okay? These are our goals. They were selected, they were approved by the Morant Agency of Education, they were approved by CSSU. We ran them by you at the retreat last year. You might remember this is part of our conversation was this AYP plan. And I kind of want to give context to this conversation about MTSS because smack dab in goal number three of what we have committed to do is we're going to do something fundamentally different. We are going to change the system because what we have done for the past ten years, nobody's saying that what we have been doing hasn't been good, but it has not resulted in the growth that we want to see of these two subgroups, our low SES and our students in receiving special education services. So, the conversation, and this is a very research-based system that we're now going to explain to you. What is an MTSS? It is different from what Kathy just described. It's different from what we grew up with, a system of providing interventions. Not just a little different, but radically different. Totally different approach. It requires some changes that we're going to talk about today. It's a discussion item today, actually. Okay? Because in this plan, we said we were going to do it. I mean, have we done other things? Yeah. We've changed our leadership teams because we committed and said that can move us forward. We're trying to get more parent involvement. We're continually talking about this. These are the three things that we said, these are our number one targets to move Shelburne Community School forward. So what we want to do with this presentation right now is make sure you, as a board, have a real thorough understanding of what MTSS is because it's easy to throw acronyms out. We want you to really understand it. And then, we'll talk about, here's what we've done already, and here are some things, not always the best feeling things, but for the sake of our kids that we think we need to do. I'm going to turn it over to John, who is going to kind of talk about the bigger picture of MTSS.
So the first slide is, what is MTSS? It's a bit wordy. I think it really lays the groundwork for the rest of the presentation. So if we just take a minute and just read it to ourselves. Five points really resonate for me from that, this kind of opening piece of the MTSS field guide. And the first one is that systematic and comprehensive approach. Nope, go back. Good. That systematic and comprehensive approach, comprehensive approach to meeting all students' needs. And I think to do that, we need really effective collaboration, not just by a general educator, but collaboration by a general educator, a special educator. You know, we're going to utilize our school psychologist, our social worker, so really wrapping our own kids. The third piece is that high-quality first instruction and intervention that is both responsive and differentiated. Molly likes to use a word, and I really like the word, it's nimble. We're nimble in how we provide interventions. I think it's a great adjective to how we need to be when kids aren't kind of meeting classroom expectations. That fourth piece, and CSSU has a great comprehensive and balanced assessment system in place. So we're using our assessments to monitor kids and see how they're doing. And the fifth piece speaks back, speaks back, speaks back to that high-quality instruction. It's being delivered by expertise. You know, that certified teacher. There you go.
I have a question on that slide.
Yeah.
Sorry, Molly. Third to last line, what does compensatory mean in that setting, in that sentence?
My understanding is that, and maybe Molly can speak better to it, but to pay for something? Molly, do you want, can you better articulate it?
Yeah, it's usually defined by a grant-funded program for a specialized group of kiddos, like a Title I program.
So it's money. It's talking about compensation.
Money wrapped around a service.
It's not compensating for a deficiency. It has to do with the financials. Thank you.
So, you know, we were interviewing two or three weeks ago for a district position, and one of our questions was about MTSS. And I think it's still grounded in a lot of people's lenses through RTI, and kind of it's directed at special ed, you know? And it's bigger than that, as that first slide kind of pointed out. It speaks to, it's not general ed, it's not special ed, it's all kids. And so I think, to think about MTS, we need to really shift our thinking from past habits and change our historical perspective. You know, and Alan started this presentation talking about special ed. And kind of when we all went to school and when instruction occurred in the classroom, if we were eligible for special ed, that kid probably got pulled out of the classroom and taken to another part of the building where he received or she received her instruction and might not necessarily have been tied to the curriculum. And in this, thinking about MTSS and how it's successful is that instruction is done by a classroom teacher and a special educator, you know? And in that, we're thinking about collaboration because potentially in the old model, sorry, I don't talk very loud, potentially in that old model, there wasn't a lot of collaboration. You know, what the classroom teacher was doing, and if you were eligible for special education, you'd leave the classroom. And what you're doing with that special educator might not be tied to the curriculum. So now we're thinking collaboration, that special educator and the classroom teacher are working together to provide the classroom content. And that third piece is a service delivery model. And when we think about service delivery models, how are we delivering services? How are we utilizing our resources? And I think if we think back to, you know, what Alan spoke of, the service delivery model is probably, is, and probably, and it still is in parts of the country, and in parts of Vermont, we pull kids out and that's where we provide our services. But in thinking about MTSS and meeting all the kids' needs, we provide those services in the classroom first, delivered by high-quality first instruction. There you go. If you're to read through the field guide, there's kind of some language that, that really sticks out through the field guide. And there's that term prevention, acceleration, intensification. You know, when we talk about prevention, what are we doing to prevent kids from falling back? And when we talk about kids, we're not talking about just specialized kids, we're talking about all kids. How are we monitoring the systems in the classroom so we're preventing kids from falling behind? And if they do fall behind, how are we accelerating their learning so they are catching up? And there may be students who need to make more than one year of progress based on kind of their past histor, their past histories in school. In the intensification piece, it refers to characteristics of instruction and intervention. So what are we doing to catch kids up? What are interventions? How often are they occurring? Who are they delivered by? And it goes to that term that Molly uses, are we nimble in our interventions? There you go. Some of that other common language that's kind of tied into MTSS, and it's tied back into the RTI model, and we're kind of changing our thinking on it, you know? Originally, you could put this out into kind of that eighty, fifteen, five, and that model doesn't necessarily work anymore, you know? We're kind of, we're rethinking. And that tier one is that high-quality first instruction delivered by expert. Tier two is, we know we're not meeting their needs, so what are we going to do? We're going to provide specific targeted intervention that is designed to accelerate student growth. And if we're still not meeting our needs, that's where that tier three comes in. And it could be special ed. That's where we're providing increasingly intensive, individualized intervention that's designed to accelerate student learning. Yeah. I think the next slide really, for me, really captures MTSS. And it all starts with that high-quality first instruction. And that's kind of the model we go to, to meet all kids' needs. And what we'll do is we'll kind of break down each slide right now, so you can jump ahead. So that high-quality first instruction, it's looking at that all, all students have access, all students, not just students who are eligible for special, special education who might be pulled out, but all students have access to rich and high-quality first instruction. That's the kind of the most important thing of multi-tiered systems of support. We're also learning that we need to ensure that all students are able to learn and achieve within the content. And the research shows that collaboration and co-teaching models involving both certified subject area teachers and special educators are the most effective models for ensuring these outcomes. There you go, Molly. So, that early identification of students who are struggling, this is the first opportunity that teachers have to identify students who are struggling. We want to do that as early as possible. That model of waiting till they fail, you know, waiting till third grade, because that's, in the past, that's when we have seen a rise in students who are eligible for services. You know, we waited till they failed. And now we really want to get to them as early as possible. So how do we do that? We have the com, comprehensive assessment system. We have a common assessment calendar that, you know, Molly and Central Office have put together. We have VCAT, our data system, where we can review, we input all the data, and we can review it. And then classroom-based assessments and data, so that's our formative and summative The next step is that classroom-based instruction adjustment and monitoring. Once a student is flagged in the classroom, teachers are responsible for making instructional adjustments in the classroom. These are minor interventions that are monitored as an ongoing basis to determine whether they're being effective. All right? So we're differentiating our instruction, and we're making targeted, responsive adjustments to what we're doing in the classroom to meet all students' needs. We're good. The next piece in that is, the student might still not quite be meeting the goals within the classroom. We're going to do, we're going to continue doing instructional adjustments in place, and we're going to continue to progress monitor. All right? This is where we use our EST, and this is where at Shelburne Community School, we have our data teams, and we kind of look at how the kids are doing and make adjustments. And this is where we're going to start to provide those targeted interventions that's designed to accelerate growth. And this is where you can speak to being fluid and nimble, and how long are those interventions occurring? What are we using? And finally, if that continues, and the student continues not to make progress, this is where you want to look at this potential comprehensive evaluation process. You know, they might become eligible for special education. We're going to utilize a diagnostic assessment to see if they are eligible for special education services. However, our goal within these interventions need to be as fluid as tier-two interventions so the teams are able to adjust instruction based on data and continue to use a problem-solving mentality. We're good.
All right. So how are we moving toward creating this goal? So we're going back to that original goal that we talked about, our goal number three in our school improvement plan that was created. And we are going to create a highly effective multi-tiered system of support, obviously MTSS, that uses student learning data and outcomes to ensure that all students achieve at optimal levels. The system finds its foundation in the development of instructional teams with classroom teachers, specialists, special educators, and paraeducators at pre-K5 and 6, 8 levels that meet weekly to develop and refine units of instruction that are aligned to the standards-based curriculum. And two primary areas of growth in that, that meet those needs are the alignment of our systems and structures and the professional development that we do in curriculum and instruction. So that second one, professional development and curriculum instruction, this really does respond to tier-one instruction. So that's where we focus, although obviously, many people are getting this, this professional development. Math best practice, we've spent the last three years, I believe, in math best practice studio classes, teaching all of our math instructors from K through eighth grade how to teach using best practices in mathematics in this embedded math studio method. Our co-teaching, we have three classroom teachers, special educator pairs, that are currently piloting a co-teaching model, and they're providing tier-one instruction with systems, with training that's planned to continually expand until this model is throughout our CSSU, in our, our school and CSSU. And then our common core in services, which Molly has been instrumental in doing for the last three or four years. This is a fundamental aspect of the common core, believing that all students can learn, and instructional lesson design elements support this core of MTSS. And finally, the implementation of new curriculum and professional development, and the examples of that would be our Connected Math Program, CMP3, our Bridges Program, K-5, and our Lucy Coggins writing units that we're doing this year. And when we talk about alignment of systems and structures, the creation of our Leadership Team Subcommittee that we established this year in response to both this goal and our other leadership team goal, so this is actually for two of our goals. The team of this Subcommittee from our leadership team consisted of the co-principals and John Madden, who's our math coordinator, Jen Sabushi, our literacy coordinator, and John, our special ed director. And we all went to a conference, SIA, Strategy and Action Team. And we've been doing our own professional development around that, and that's been a focus of the structure that we're using for our leadership team now. Linking our certified special educators to specific teams and students. So for example, in the middle school, a shift to a special educator on each team for next year, and then realignment of job assignments for other special educators. Creating a schedule that assures that tier-two and three interventions can be delivered without interfering with tier-one instruction. Those are our intervention blocks that we have put into our schedule this year, particularly at the K through three level. Creating opportunities for classroom teachers, special educators, interventionists, and guidance counselors to collaborate weekly around student data in order to assess student progress and implement informed interventions. And this we do during our MC squared meetings that you've heard of. And finally, targeted use of math interventionist, as I said before, in our K2 classrooms. So that's been a big focus this year, math in K2. So now we'd ask if you have any questions?
I'd like to better understand the co-teaching. And, you know, what does that look like at its end point? You're talking about you're piloting in three, and but what does that become? And you mentioned in the, I think in the previous slide, how you've got a special educator now assigned to each middle school team. Again, how is, how is that different than what it looked like before? Because it's all, I guess my assumption was, is that you now have this special educator who maybe is responsible for, you know, all kids within that team, whereas before you might have had, you know, a number of special educators involved with a number of kids in a particular team, and now it sounds like you're trying to, you know, make pairings, if you will, but have that, instead of having that special educator maybe have kids in all four of the, the middle school teams or just concentrating on one. Is that?
Yeah. I can speak to it because there's really, there's two elements there. There's kind of a structural element and a pedagogical element. I was to talk about the pedagogical element. In its, in its purest form, it is taking a special educator and where before, their, their clear and defined role was, they were responsible for a specific group of students. That was their thinking. Even students would think, that's my teacher, and there's my regular teacher. If you were walk into one of the pilot classes, I've seen this happen, you might have a, there could at one time be two teachers simultaneously teaching in that class. And it would, it might be difficult to tell who's a special educator and who's, who's the regular educator. I think the key point there is not so much that it's happening instructionally, but it happens planning-wise. That there is a structure that sits down, and if it's Patty and I co-teaching, and I'm planning this lesson, our heads are coming together, we're planning this lesson, and we're creating differentiated modeling. The entire lesson is designed around this entire group of students. There's no assumption that, oh, that part can handle this part of the lesson, this part can handle this. It's, it's much broader than that. And the research shows that the outcome of that is better instruction for everybody. It's why we moved towards heterogeneous classes and want those students back in the regular classroom. Okay? Doesn't mean there still are interventions happening out here. Those may be pre-teaching. Maybe we decide that, boy, in order to understand this concept, Alan's a little rocky on this. We're going to give him some pre-teaching so he can really access the concept. Or it might be some remediation, just so that I, we're ready to move along at a relatively similar pace. But that's really the core of co-teaching, is that we are cos in the process. We are, we are, we are responsible for that instruction, both of us together, rather than some kind of separation there.
And if you think-
You might add to it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you think of it as two specialists literally coming together, two people with a, a skill set, coming together differing skill sets, and how they make that a stronger process because of the skills they bring to the table.
I think, Russ, it's, this is my first year there, and it's going to be a shift within our system because we've been writing, you know, service pages so that a lot of the services aren't done by pullout. So we need to change our service pages so they're written. We don't have the certification to say co-teaching. I mean, we're kind of working towards that. But to say that the student will be receiving his services in the classroom by a special educator. So it's kind of, it's going to be a shift within our service delivery model. Whereas, I think, also, we, you know, last year, so wasn't there, but, you know, we had a special educator covering four, five, six. It's kind of spreading their knowledge base a little thin. I mean, it's covering quite a few teams. So it's really looking and linking them to a team.
And I think the one thing I, I want to make sure that we put on the table is that the, one of the big reasons we do this is to maintain relationships between children and-
to maintain relationships between children in, in school. When you pull kids out of classes, it is detrimental. I, I don't care what anybody says, the research is clear that as much as you can keep kids together in groups, K to fi, K to eight, you wanna keep kids together in groups.
So in your, hold on a second, in one of your statements on the previous slide right there, you mentioned that there was an opportunity to pull kids out, I thought, at regularly scheduled blocks. Now, what are those regularly scheduled blocks? Because I know it's not like there's any spare time in the schedule.
Great question, yeah. And because what, the, the old model that we described was math is happening. We're accepting the assumption that Alan can't learn math. So Alan's gonna be pulled out of math and receive some kind of alternative instruction here. Which now as we kind of analyze that and think of it, well, what's the possibility of Alan ever catching up? He's missing. And so what we're looking for is a model that says, I'm gonna be there for that regular instruction. And we're gonna craft a time during the day, an intervention block, where there isn't tier one instruction happening. And it's what we built in the schedule for next year and the model that's been tested around the country is at, let's say, a K five. It's about a thirty minute block. And a thirty minute block when it is all hands on deck. It is your special educator, any, any para-professionals, your core teachers, your specialist, your literacy specialist, your math. And, and they are coming into that block of time. And it's kind of, we might refer to it as a what I need block. Some students are gonna get some acceleration or a little bit deeper thinking under math best practice. We're not just gonna give them the next topic. We're gonna challenge to go deeper and get a deeper understanding of it while others will be brought up to speed so they're ready to move forward. It requires intense coordination to be effective. One of those big struggling boxes, coordinating that piece of how to move it. But it's a, it's a flexible model that says, I might be getting this targeted intervention for about three weeks, gets me caught up, then I may move on to something else.
But that doesn't, I mean, that sounds really great in theory.
Yeah.
But is a child gonna miss PE or music or something? I don't understand where this, if you're gonna, you gotta get the time from somewhere.
Right, so what we did this year, actually, in Laura's class, on Discover Team, some students who were not fluent in their math facts, for example, left for the first twenty minutes maybe of, of class. I think, yes.
So we got frustrated as a fourth grade team because we just thought, are we gonna keep going when these kids can't make ten? Are we gonna disrespect them to the point that we just ignore the fact that they can't pull numbers apart and say six and four is ten, five and five is ten, and do it rapidly? And John Madden had shared a really great research website with us about how that is just a key to success in math, math, to be able to decompose numbers. So we just said, we have to make the time. So all the fourth grade teachers said, yes, we do. So we all have students that we need to send. And it was December, so we felt that responsive classroom was well underway and if we could get attendance done. What happened on our, our half of the fourth grade team, my team with Patrick Halliday, he took all the kids that didn't need that intervention and he did a math enrichment, like a puzzle with them for the first half hour of school. And I went down to the math center and worked with John and we taught kids how to make ten. We played a game, we did some practice pencil and paper. And we saw some really nice movement and transfer into the math classroom, which is what we were looking for. And so we didn't have the time, we just took the time and everybody worked together to make it happen.
But nobody missed anything critical within that.
I just wanted to put the.
Oh, absolutely, yes, it's a great question.
Yeah, and Alan has it built in to the six, eight schedule. And right now we're, we're scheduling, and this is on the scheduling committee. And we're scheduling, we're trying to schedule it for K five. But also I think it's taking that next step too and not defining school between this eight and three and really utilizing kind of time after school, time before school and trying to offer intervention blocks during that time as well.
Right, you've identified a core challenge, it clearly is, there is not enough time in the day.
Yeah.
If, if there was a simple solution to this, people far greater than us who've sat in those chairs would have solved it a long time ago, but.
And it's ironic that when you put up that slide where you said, in the same time that everyone's learning the curriculum, we're gonna take these kids that are having trouble and make them learn more. We're gonna catch them up within the same amount of time. That's physically impossible without another model. And I, it was good to hear that you're doing before and after school work too.
And that is one of the key principles of this is that you have to start early. So if you think of a five-year-old coming to kindergarten, if they're a year behind, then to make up that year plus what they'll learn in kindergarten, obviously, is making up two years. But the further they go without having those necessary interventions to try to catch them up, then the further behind they will continue to be, even if they only multiply it by, you know, a point two factor or whatever it might be.
So in the three classes where you're piloting it, what grades are those?
We have it happening with.
Two, six, eight.
I'm sorry?
Two, six, eight, and then went down to K two.
So.
And then triple E's embedded.
What, what I'm trying to understand is, is, you know, you've, you've got co-teaching, you've got a, I guess, a, a classroom teacher and a special educator. Is the special educator co-teaching with that or are they co-teaching for the full school day? And where I'm going with this, you know, we've, we've got forty odd, you know, classroom teachers in the building. We don't have forty special educators in the building, you know, where does this go? That, that if we decide it's, it's, you know, successful and wanna expand it out to all of Shelburne and all of CSSU and whatnot, what does that mean as far as personnel?
Yeah, and I think this is what CBU is wrestling with tonight, you know. But I think what it comes down to is really, I think an ideal number is a special educator per team. And then that special educator and classroom teacher are really collaborating. And, you know, one day, the special educator could be in Laura's class and the next day, Laura's part, partner, who, they're teaching the same math curriculum, has a need for that, for that special educator come over. So there's that flexibility and, and fluidity within a special educator's day, you know.
A, a team could be.
Four teachers, yeah, four teachers, Alan, four.
Yeah, I mean, as we, as we look at it at middle school level, we started this year with two special educators. And there are four teams, twelve, four teams, twelve teachers. So you can imagine the complexity of trying to, I mean, that, that special educator, if they were trying to collaborate, could spend all their time just in planning meetings, not working with students, not being a co-teacher, any of those. So the move is to go to having a special educator as a member of each of those middle school teams. So at least there is that opportunity, when the, when the middle school teams are sitting down, special educator's at the table. Special educator knows all those kids, knows all the dynamics, knows the schedule, becomes an equivalent member of that team, basically, rather than this outsider that, I'm here to help you solve problems. No, I'm just another member of the team.
So I, I guess what, you know, I would wanna understand at some point is, is, you know, what are the, the, you know.
What's the end?
What, what are the personnel and, and the budget ramifications of fully implementing this? You know, so i- is there a way that if, if you decide that, you know, this is great, this works, this is the best thing we've ever done, how do we afford it? How do we roll it out broader than just a pilot?
Yeah, and I, I think that's part of the reason we've got a discussion here, it's part of the reason we have an audience here, is that requires some difficult choices as we move forward with that model. Is it taking pieces of what was the old model and saying, okay, we're, we're going to reallocate resources? Not wanting to refer to people, it's just resources, because that's painful anytime, but that's really where we're at.
I can say to Russ that, you know, it'll always be within reality how far we can take that model because it, it could potentially be very expensive. Some of it will have to do with caseload. When you're balancing a classroom teacher and a special educator in one team, it'll also be somewhat dependent on how many, what's the need in that team? There might be a team that has a lot of need and you would do that full embedded model there, but perhaps not elsewhere. So every school, while we already know the research bears out that it is a, a wonderful method to integrate what goes on with classroom instruction and intervention and weave those together. It doesn't mean intervention isn't needed, but it, it's a great way to have inclusion occur. But we also are perfectly aware that there's no way we're gonna be able to afford a special educator and classroom teacher co-teaching in, in every single classroom. So that'll be a school by school decision. You know, there have been some really successful team-based models in Williston where we've been watching and seeing. And so now we're growing that and Shelburne's trying it. So how far it goes, I don't think any of us know, but the reality will dictate some of that.
Yeah, and Russ, I think it has to be number of kids are eligible for IP's.
Absolutely.
Based on current funding mechanisms coming out of the state of Vermont. We've seen, when, we've seen an increase of this year of thirteen kids are eligible for IP's. So now we're over a hundred. We have six kids who are currently being evaluated at the moment. So that's, that's kind of where we are right now.
Yeah, and, and I kind of ground myself almost in a moral obligation, Russ. You know, it is, we, we now know that the system that is, that, that exists just doesn't work for a group of kids. And, you know, I, I guess I put it, when, when this board hired me, one thing I said is I'm gonna run my decisions through the Xander test. And if I knew that my kid needed those services and the school had, had a system that wasn't doing it and that was my kid, I'd be like, you're gonna do something different. I, I feel that obligation every day. I don't, I don't, I can't tell you how much it's gonna cost, I can't tell you, but it's like, this is what, you know, what we're talking about. This is what we can afford to do now. We know it's, we firmly believe its research base is better than what we have. And, and we're here to say, help us get there.
Why, why are we doing this now? If I understand correctly, more of the special ed services are going to be directed from, by the supervisory union. There's gonna be some comparison of what Shelburne is offering versus what Williston is offering. And from what I heard, Williston has an awful lot of people in, in special ed services, whereas Shelburne's model is, is relatively light in that regard. And in other words, why, why are we doing this now when next year, I think it's gonna be under different pages?
Yeah, we'll go to, it will go to kind of the CSSU and Megan will be kind of, well, Megan will continue her same role. I think when we look at Williston's numbers and compare Shelburne's numbers, Shelburne just hasn't, I'm, I'm speaking from six, seven months in. You know, Shelburne had always, and speaking of special educators, had always talked about, yeah, we need to hire more special educators. But it just kind of never got the next step. So if we look at our numbers, we're starting to align ourselves more so with what Williston has and our numbers kind of align.
But what's interesting though is. Williston looks at our numbers and says, why aren't we closer to that? And so we're sort of looking at Williston's numbers and saying, why aren't we closer to that? And the, I, I think what's going on at this, you know, at the CSSU level, was it Act eight fifty-three or one fifty-three, whatever it was. As much as anything, it's about the financing of it. And, and not so much about what's your model for how you're delivering the services. It's how are you going to make the SU responsible for it? Have all of those BSU employees? And then how are you going to allocate out the costs? More so than it's, you know, exactly how is each model going to be run?
I'd also point out, I guess, the bottom question, that the SU under Megan Roy's leadership has done some fantastic work about establishing guiding principles, establishing this is what research said a special ed program should look like. And it's causing all of us to move. Everybody's moving kind of, because we were very different. Everybody's moving in a different direction. This is, any movement that we've suggested, whether it was a request coming to you to add a special, a special educator at the middle school level earlier this year, or the request we have before you tonight to say, let's shift some specialist positions into a certified special educator. Those are moving us into closer alignment with those guiding principles at the CSSU level. And that's been collaborative work. Now, I can be quite frank that it has not been analyzed from an equity of finances level. And this is not a conversation that we've sat there and said, wow, if, if we wait, maybe somebody else is gonna foot the bill. Or we, we haven't looked at that and there may be implications, but I, I don't know if that's what you were.
Well, I wasn't really looking at it from the standpoint of the finances. I was really looking at it from the standpoint of the administration, you know. You know, why are you focused on it now rather than, you know, next year it's gonna be different anyway, so.
And, and hopefully I grounded you in, in the very beginning because we have an improvement plan.
Yeah.
Yep. And, and we've made commitments and we are accountable to those commitments. I mean, we don't, it, it's not an option for us to make some very specific moves that, I mean, this is far from a knee-jerk reaction. This has been, this conversation started almost two years ago now.
It's driven by the AYP.
Driven by the AYP, but again, AYP, I wanna be careful because that kind of feels like, oh, we're doing it because the federal government's gonna take money from us. The, the piece that, that I'm comfortable is the AYP process forced us to take a really in-depth look at the research that says, what do schools that are not being identified, they have special ed students just like we do. They have low SES students just like we do, but their kids are making that accelerated growth. What are they doing? And, and we identified that group came together, and this was a group of community members, teachers. I mean, it was our leadership group that looked and said, we need to do these three things. And, you know, there, there's whole pages of layers behind this, those goals. One of which is, take a look at that system, take a look at the allocation of resources, whether it's human resources, dollar resources, time resources, and do this. It's why we have MC squared, it's why we're moving to try to have teams with embedded special educators, it's why, all those things are research-based.
And we would continue to have those after one, Act one fifty-three comes into effect. So just to let you know that structure won't change at all, it's just the way that personnel shifts happen, so.
And Mom, I can say, I can think I can speak for Megan, but Megan, just as I do, consults with every school, with every administrative group, with the directors of special ed. So she's very aware and supportive of, of this model change. And it is in concert with where she will go as she begins to do this more collectively at the SU level. If she thought she'd have to come in in a year and undo something, she would not, she would have said, put the kibosh on us. So I think really what, what is happening is, in terms of the numbers of students you have here, you're coming into alignment with the number of special educators you ought to have. And the model by which you're doing that is in line with how the whole SU is, is gonna look over, over a matter of time.
I mean, it's my understanding that, you know, Act one fifty-three is already in place and that we're already, maybe not for this year, but for next year, you know, from a, from a finance standpoint, we weren't doing it right. I mean, we, we were treating it as a purchase service like we get transportation. And what we're supposed to be doing and will do for, I guess, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, is allocate expenses across CSU by some version of student count. So that's really, you know, what the big difference is going to be as, as we look forward. But other than that, Act fifty-three is effectively already in place.
And but as far as a model and how we do that, you know, that, that's a philosophical and research-based decision that the whole SU is endorsing. So what's about to happen here is, is very much in line with what it would look like, no matter if we were compliant with one fifty-three or not.
Are there any other questions on this?
My question is, now, I'm, I'm convinced that this is a good model, that this is important to do, that, that I have confidence in your doing it. Are you going to present to us what we need to do in the way of personnel to get us there at this point?
It's, it's, I, I think it's like any growth process, I mean, I think we're here and. Yeah, we, we wanna be there. I think what it, I think what we're gonna have to. I think what it, I think what we're gonna have to present is step by step. I mean, I think for us to go to completely to co-teaching, we haven't done the professional development. We've got some small pot, and that's really our next step. As we look at next year, if we have an embedded special educator on every middle school team, that's where we really target our focus, and let's say, let's learn what we need to do about co-teaching, because that is a fundamental, it's not just putting the person there. That doesn't make, that doesn't change anything. I mean, we, we've gotta look, and, and there are gonna be hiccups in that that we haven't even seen. You know, the, the problems that we'll be facing tomorrow, because we haven't, we haven't explored it. So I think it's going to be a step by step, and we'll keep you informed, and, but to say, here's the total implications of getting to a pure MTSS system. I don't think we're ready to say that. I think it's gonna have to be a logical...
It's gonna be safe to assume we'll have a lot more conversation in November.
I think it's safe to assume we're going to have some November conversation, a budget cycle around this, yeah.
Al, one of the things you've talked about, how it's gonna work for the students who may need the extra help, but in a co-teaching environment, I mean, how's it gonna, kids who are on track or tracking ahead? And, you know, also, how's it gonna change the dynamic? I know that when classroom assignments come out, your phone rings and people say, I don't want my kid on this team or this team. Do you think that will change the dynamic on those teams that may be viewed as weak or...
I don't think so. I mean, I don't, I mean, I guess, I, I kind of hear two different thoughts there. So I mean, you know, the, the, the first one is just in that classroom.
Well, I'm just saying, is it gonna strengthen the classroom for all the, all the stakeholders? And then, in those classrooms that are perceived to be weak, do you think that will...
Yeah, I mean...
...up the game?
Where, where I'm seeing it, you know, if we take a look at math, I think math is where we have made the most gains, because we've not only been doing the instructional work. I can take you into a co-taught math class where it, and it, it happens on a, on a daily basis on one of our teams, where it is really difficult to tell who's the teacher, who's the special educator. That's in this particularly difficult targeted class. And we have the, the growth data, all the data, the, the lesson plans are better that says, everybody's benefiting from this instruction. And it's not just, what's very different is, it's not just a special educator sitting down with Alan who's struggling. The special educator's going to, I mean, everybody struggles. Special educators come with special skills that help them, help us all overcome learning, learning challenges. We all need those at some point. That person's just there to provide them to everybody. And so everybody's able to go a little bit deeper, and it may even open up that regular ed teacher's opportunity to, again, build that relationship with that student who for years would have just been, you know, you don't fit in this classroom. Yeah, you do. So I mean, I think some of the phenomenal growth we see and the stuff that we really celebrate is, you know, when we've got a student that typically, just two or three years ago, would have been in a class, would have said, you're gonna do off-level math. And we see them in there, learning some fundamental concepts of the quadratic equation, and we're just going, I mean, you, you, those of us who've been in education for a while kind of beat ourselves up and go, how many other kids did I allow myself to make the dangerous assumption that that child couldn't learn this concept? And, and we've seen it. And, and yet it doesn't, we're not seeing it hold people back. It's tough. There's a lot of learning involved. I will not say that this is an easy pedagogical strategy. I mean, it, it challenges everybody. I mean, Lisa could talk to that. The challenge is going from a, to adding these students to your classroom raises the burden. There, there is stress on the system with this. I guarantee that. Our challenge as an issue is, how do we support that? How do we make it reasonable? How do we make sure that people don't jump ship and go, I can't do this?
But I think also, when you think of that area of expertise in teachers, sometimes we fail to remember that the education of a special educator is not just grounded in students who are on the bottom tier, if you will, of learning. Um, as a trained special educator, I got a lot of training on the top tier of learners. And it was all about this idea of, back then they didn't call it this, but differentiation of instruction. And so really, special educators are the experts on how to differentiate for each individual student. Whereas classroom teachers historically have much more training in how do we train, how do we educate groups of students. So when you take those two and put them together, it, it just is really powerful to the learning of all the students in that classroom.
So if I heard you correctly, when you were talking about this, um, yeah, it sounds like it's gonna have some potentially significant impact on how we allocate FTEs and personnel when we go to this. And the fact that six point two point one is on here, and the association has some concerns that they wanted to come speak to. Could you expand a little bit more on what that's going to look like, or what that might look like with expanded co-teaching? I mean, it sounded like you were talking about more certified personnel, and I'm going to guess that that means less non-certified personnel.
Correct, and, and I think at, at this point, we'll, it, it's, this decision here today is one step at a time. You know, it is, it is looking at a, a, a subgroup of specialists that have specifically, and, and the challenge part is, very effectively. I mean, we're not saying this group hasn't made a tremendous difference in the lives of a, of a significant number of students that they have provided that intervention for and, and given some remediation. But we're saying that within this model, we think it would be more effective to add a certified special educator to the mix that will allow us to come one step closer to this model. Not, not achieving it by any means, but saying, that's, that's the shift we feel we can make and do it without, without sacrificing. And I know there's some questions. We can answer the specific question. Probably better, better let the questions get on the table before we answer them. You know, but, you know, there, there are, are there challenges? Yeah, there, there are always challenges. But we'll address them. We, we have plans for them.
Yeah.
So if we're done with four one, then that is sort of a segue into the, what was six two, which is your recommendation to reconfigure.
Yeah.
So what we can do is, I expect you will give your portion of the presentation six two.
Yeah.
And then Fran will, will speak for six two one. Is that, am I correct? You're gonna speak as the association?
And, and some others will.
And then, yeah, I would ask that after Fran speaks, everyone else can speak, but if we could all get our chance to speak the first time before someone comes back, um, if that's reasonable, if you know what I mean, everyone, no seconds until everyone's head first. Uh, and, you know, just keep your comments to the point and timely. I'm not gonna say limit it to a minute, but, you know, it is already eight o'clock, and I don't wanna keep folks here too late, so. So we'll start with Alan and Patty, and then Fran, and then we'll go from, you know, whoever wants to speak first through the line.
Okay.
Okay?
And, um, without repeat, repeating the entire presentation, which I, I think hopefully kind of got us grounded there. In, in this specific instance, the, the request of the administration is that we, we would like to, and, and what we went looking for was a net budget zero way of moving us closer to MTSS. You helped us in the budget cycle. I mean, we added in the budget cycle a special educator. And now the request is that next year for staffing, we would eliminate special ed specialist department. That's three individuals. And those funds would be used to pay the salary of one certified special educator that we'd like to hire, with that person being deployed in K five. We also have, there, there's, there's another role here that, that we see this person playing as we kind of talk about what we would be hiring. And we've also identified that there is a, a, a population of students who have emotional and behavioral challenges. And they're, because they're, we, we don't have a specific resource with skills and training to support us in those students, one piece of their role would be case management of those students in coordination with kind of being the point person to coordinate planning room, guidance, social worker, all those pieces that allows those, those people, I mean, for instance, our planning room can be entirely consumed by two or three students. So it is, and our planning room doesn't have the skills and knowledge. Again, it's kind of that question of what are the specialized skills that a person needs to provide the, the, the feedback we need about developing behavior plans, supporting behavior plans, coordinating resources, working with a classroom teacher, all those pieces. That's another piece we see on the, on the agenda of this hire. So, I mean, it's, it's justified within MTSS. It's also justified within kind of our, our behavioral systems as well.
Alan, um, my understanding is that our, there's been, there's one resignation and one, um, retirement in the, in the area, and several months of, um, Georgine is retiring.
Yes, Georgine is retiring.
And Ricky is retiring. And I thought you had mentioned a number of months ago, when we were in budget talks, that you had thought about re, reconfiguring that area too. Does this have anything to do with that at all? Because you're talking about the planning room.
Right, um, not so much a reconfiguration, but the adding of some expertise in terms of a, which would be the component of that special educator, that that would be. We, we haven't gone out and posted a job description for a certified special educator with expertise in students with emotional behavioral, emotional disabilities and behavioral concerns. You know, our, our high flyers, as we call them, and that, that is clearly gonna be part of this job description in, in hopes of taking some load off of our planning room and allowing that to go back to the preventative piece rather than the reactive piece. I mean, we very often find ourselves with our planning room just react, react, react. And really, we want a planning room that says, here, here's a little issue, you know. Alan is trying some behaviors on for size. Let's correct them, rather than, Alan's been doing this all year, and he keeps doing it, and we know he's gonna live his life in the planning room, and those are very different situations, and we've kind of lost our focus in some ways, because our population is changing as well. We're seeing more incidents of that. Is that kind of answered?
Thank you. I just wanted to know where that...
Where that fit in, yeah.
Okay.
With that number of changes, cautious to make whole-scale systemic changes until we have the bodies in place, and they can kind of look and say, this is where it fit too. So those hires are happening.
So what are the absolute numbers of licensed special educators that are gonna be into, in the building after this hire would be made?
Can you help with that? Yeah, I'll let John kind of...
It'd be nine case managers, not including Triple E.
I'm sorry?
So nine, but not including Shelley down at Triple E. And then, so it works out to be essentially eleven point one numbers-wise, given we foresee kind of numbers increasing, they always do over the summer.
So eleven point one...
As caseload size.
Kids for...
Current ones.
God, okay.
Yeah.
And how does that compare to other schools across the SU? Similar number?
Similar in line, yeah. Some have a little smaller, some have a few more. It's in line, I can speak to Camel's home. We had twelve. We're right in there. It's kind of the number that we tried. Fifth grade for me last year, I had ten.
All right, any other questions? No? All right, so we'll move on to Fran.
I'm gonna basically read to just...
Okay.
Uh, it was a little bit cozier when we were sitting at Shelburne Community School in the, in the, uh, in the staff lounge than sitting back here on the peanut gallery. But it really wasn't that long ago that I was part of that budget process with all of you. And, uh, we sat around the table, and, uh, at that point, admin, you know, proposed that, uh, two pairs be cut from, from the, from the budget. And at that point, even though my role was as a budget buddy, I had to put my association hat on and, and, and talk to you about, you know, the importance of the para, you know, in the daily lives of, of the students, especially, you know, for those students who, um, who need the most academic and emotional support. Of course, little did I know at that point, you know, that those cuts that were proposed through the budget process, that, you know, a few months later here, we were going to, we just passed the budget, and a few months later here, we're talking about making more cuts. And this time, not for budget reasons, but certainly for, um, you know, what I consider sudden program changes. And I use the word sudden because it's sudden to all of us that are sitting on this side. Alan indicated that this is something that's been in the planning process for a long time. So my question again is, then, for the voters of Shelburne, why did we not put this on the table when we needed to at budget time? And, um, if we knew about it at that point, it should have gone out, you know, for us to make the decision. We already proposed one additional, um, special educator, which we approved at that point. Anyway, according to the many, uh, the memo that was sent to the association regarding all of this, it stated that the admin was proposing up to three para reductions, and it could be at any level. Well, you know, I took a look at that, and it said it could be at any of the, the levels. However, really, that's not what's happening. We're, we are literally wiping out an entire section of para specialists. And these are the paras that are working with basically tier three students, you know, who need the most individual help. And those are the people that we've decided that we're going to cut out of this for a special educator. So, um, you know, I, I really, you know, question that, that particular decision. Uh, the three people whose positions that are being cut are the, are individuals, you know, two are here, who have worked at SES for many years. Each of these paras has very extensive training for the positions that they currently hold. And, uh, and our school has backed a lot of their training, you know, financially supporting them and providing the training for them. Together, they provide seventy-five to eighty hours of direct instruction to nearly forty students every week. Now, I don't know how one special educator is possibly going to have face-to-face contact with, um, students like that. And now, as Alan described, the special educator is going to take on another role besides just working with students. They're going to be in charge of the quote-unquote administrative portion of the planning room and the behavior specialist and those other people that are in that. Not, and I'm not saying that we don't need them, you know, but need the help. But again, I question where, you know, how we're getting to the process of, of following this, you know, the, um, the new program that we're headed into. In addition to the impacts that, uh, the cuts are going to have on our ability to pro, uh, to provide the, uh, students with academic support, these cuts, as I had mentioned before, are also going to affect other areas. Uh, we're, you know, facing an increase in some students, and some students, as John had mentioned, that, that, that have more, um, more needs. We are reducing the number of paras. We're reducing these three, and we're reducing two. So we're losing five bodies in there that are going to be working with children. And I wanna know how, how do we, with that many fewer, um, adults in the building, are we gonna ensure the, the safety of students at recess, particularly at recess? Are we gonna send teachers out? I mean, we've got to have bodies. You have to have bodies out there with those students in order to provide the coverage. You have to have bodies with people that are walking their students from class to class in the cafeteries and other places. Not to mention the, the, the instructional part, you know, of the day, because the paras cover all of those other things. Paras feel pretty darn stretched thin already, you know. We feel, we feel when a para is out sick during the day and we can't get, can't get a sub, not, we do without, you know, and, or we scramble. Our secretaries are running around, going out to playground to recess duty helping. We're looking for bodies that can help us in that process. And so by cutting five individuals, it's going to have an impact. And so, a- a- as I said before, and it's not just the students with the IEPs. It is the regular classrooms... It is the regular classroom student, you know, that, that sometimes may just need that little extra adult attention in order to move them forward. And if you take that person away, there's nobody there. Granted, you're talking about putting a special educator in there, but, and, and like I said, I'm not saying that don't have a special educator, but not at the expense of more people that can work with your students. And I've talked to you about bang for the buck. You can't get better bang for the buck than, than the three para educators that you're, that, uh, you know, are supposedly being cut, you know, in this process. And as I've said, I know that a lot of thought's gone into this, you know, it's not like it's, it come right away and that's why I questioned the thing about the budget before. But I really am asking this board, you know, to take the time to really look at and understand the total impacts of the decisions that you make when you're cutting paras within that building and how it affects, um, the delivery of, of, of education and emotional support and the other support that we provide, uh, within the building. How does it affect the teachers that are teaching in, within those classrooms when they don't have somebody in there to say, could you please take the student down to the planning room? Or can you take the student to the bathroom? When you don't no longer have that, you've got to find somebody when the teacher is totally alone. And, and of course, we can't forget, how does it affect the three people that are being cut? It's their jobs, you're cutting their salaries and their jobs in some cases. So I think that we need to look at that. The other question that I had on the agenda was, uh, the agenda states that these items are in the discussion matters section of, of the agenda. You know, and I looked at that and I read that. And it says that those things are supposed to be acted upon, you know, at a future meeting. Yet, um, down below in the six-point, whatever it was, it, this item is also on the agenda under action matters. So it says you've got between three-point-one or whatever we were on to, to the, to six-point-two to make that decision, you know, on whether you're going to cut it. You're, you're saying it's, it's a, you're going to talk about it and then vote on it later at a future meeting. Yet, you're, the action matter says that you're going to vote on it tonight, you know. So I, once again, I'm asking you to please take the time to really consider, you know, what, what the effect will be. One other part is I would also like to ask that the, um, that the, the proper procedures for RIFs be followed. It is my understanding that, um, that the superintendent has outlined the proper procedure for RIFs in the past. And that part of that is that, um, there should be a committee and it should consist of somebody probably like Cindy on, on there. I'm glad to see you. Myself, um, our other, um, association representative. And then also, um, um, that, um, well, somebody from the C S S U, which would be Cindy. Meet together and figure out the RIF process, who's to be RIFed and, and exactly what the process, you know, is, will be, you know, along. That did not happen in this case. It was so rushed, it was just, let's, this is what's happening, okay, these are the people that are being RIFed. This is what we're doing and we've moved on and here we are this evening. And I think that we really need to be careful about what that process is and to make sure that, you know, the, the proper procedure is followed because there are some questions about, you know, who is actually the person that's going to get bumped? Because there are, you know, there are bumping rights. So just to, to, to end up before others speak, you know, I'm, I'm just really asking you once again, you know, to, to really consider the following, which is part of, you know, what the, the purpose of this entire thing is. And, you know, will these three cuts plus the other two cuts that you're, that, uh, you have already made really better meet the needs of the, of your students? And I think that that's the, the number one question. So I will concede the floor to others.
So my name is Alyssa Best, if you, if I haven't met you yet. I'm one of the specialist specialists.
Just make sure you state your name.
What was your last name?
Best, Best. And I, um, although the board packet is dated April first, I found out about this on April seventh, just two days ago. And I was completely floored. I just, I'm not sure how cutting the most highly trained paras in the building will help get the A, meet the A Y P goals with the most needy and vulnerable children in the building. You guys, the administration invested, um, a lot of money in training me this fall in, in literacy intervention through the Stern Center. And it's been great. It's been directly applicable to the work that I'm doing with students. So it's been really wonderful to do, to have had that training. The team paras don't necessarily have that, or have the trainings that, that we have as specialists. I heard this explained that the licensed special educator will absorb some of the services that the, some meets with the I P goals that we are working on. I don't see how one new special educator will be able to do that. So I see, if I put my future glasses on, which we were trained to do in the fall in service, I see a lot of this coming down to the team paras, having to meet the I P goals that, the students that are on their teams. And, um, I have concerns about that because not the team, not all of the team paras have the training and the knowledge and the experience that Jan and I at least have. We, um, I have a master's in education. I've been a classroom teacher. I've been a special educator. I've been a school counselor. I have thirty years in education. And, um, what Alan basically asked of me, told me that I had bumping rights, which would, you know, the opportunity to become an intensive needs para or a team para would be there for me for a lot less of the pay. And I just don't, that doesn't sit well with me. It felt like a punch in the gut, quite honestly. So that's my primary thing, uh, primary concern is the students and the kids and how this is really going to help them. And then the process. I have some real, um, concerns about the process, about being told two days before the board would be discussing this. When it sounds like it was on the docket for a while, I would have loved to have been pulled in on a conversation about A Y P or about improving our services, collaborating more. I collaborate with my special ed supervisor, Glenn, a lot about the kids that I work with. But, um, you know, I could have been, been clued in a little more to what was going on and what was coming. And I'm part of the community that voted for a budget that's cutting my position. And that just seems really bizarre to me. I live in Shelburne. I'm a community member. We went through the budget process and this was not part of it. This was not on there. So I feel kind of like an idiot for voting for this budget that involves cutting a position that I hold so, um, I think is so important. There's one other thing. Uh, I walked into my M C squared meeting today to see a poster on the wall in Patty's office with my name, Jan's name, all of the names listed. It said eliminate special ed specialists. We're in a meeting with nine other people and everyone's saying, what's going on? The teachers didn't know that this was happening. The teachers weren't made aware of this, at least the second grade teachers in this meeting. Pointing at this poster with our names on there, um, with red checkmarks next to the names of the people who could be RIFed, names of the, um, the other paras who are low on the totem pole who could be RIFed. With an indication on the top of this poster saying four fifty less an hour, three dollars less an hour, sort of saying how, what would happen if I took, uh, basically, it all played out. Everyone understood at the meeting that what this meant is that if Jan and I were bumped to a team para, we'd be making seven fifty less an hour. To find, to walk in to a room in a meeting and have that be there was really, um, just kind of awful. And it felt like a breach of trust and confidentiality and, um, it was really unfortunate. So it's been one of the hardest work weeks of my life. I'm really glad I had the opportunity to share with you some of my feelings about this. I work with some really great kids. I love my job and, um, I'm, I would really be really sad to leave.
I'm not going, I agree with everything Alyssa just said. Uh, my name's Jan Tabo, by the way, sorry. And so I'm not going to repeat everything. It dawned on me when you were speaking, Alan, and you, I'm sorry, Russ.
Russ.
Russ was asking the questions down the line about budgets and how much is this going to cost. Was it ever considered to change the role of the special ed specialists? Rather than have us be pullout, which we are not. I mean, so much of our job already, we are in the classroom. I consider myself co-teaching many of the times that I'm in these classrooms. So instead of trading us in basically for one person, why not use us as that co-teacher? And I know we're not licensed, but as Alyssa said, we've been trained. We can deliver the services. You said yourself, we have delivered the services. We are very, very good at what we do for one-third of the money. And we're happy with that. It, it's great. And we don't have all the administrative things we have to do. We don't have to worry about going to I E B, I E P meetings, getting pulled out of a classroom because one of the kids on our caseload is ending up in the planning room. And it, we're there. We're there all the time. Change the role of the specialist. And maybe even instead of hiring more special educators, look to hire people who are qualified to deliver services. It ju- this had just dawned on me as I was sitting here and we're looking at budget constraints hugely. So maybe go that other direction. And, I mean, again, I agree with everything Fran said and Alyssa said and I'm not going to belabor the points.
I'm Laura Davenport and I teach, uh, fourth grade this year and keep my students and teach fifth grade next year. And, um, most recently I've been to see you to talk about summer school. And so I'm here tonight because Joey Adams, the association president, was not able to join us. And I bring a letter signed by faculty members because as teachers, I feel like we didn't know a lot of what was going on. And, um, and this is a surprise. And I think, um, I'm known as the Pollyanna of our school that I will always find something to be glad about. And, um, this situation is saddening to me that people didn't know in advance and that we weren't able to come to this. None of us is against change. It's just the way in which it happened that is unfortunate and saddening. And so the point that, um, Fran brought out about, um, the way in which this decision was handled and communicated to the people involved and to us as a faculty is the main emphasis of this letter. And so, um, it's signed by Claire Delaurier, Ellen Mahan, Meg O'Donnell, David Southworth, Lisa Phelps, Ellen Matthews, Carly Bennett, Deb Kelly, Nancy Knackley, Rue Kendrick, Diane Hanson, Linda Maitland, Jocelyn James, Gretchen Garvey, someone whose handwriting I can't read, Amy Hazen, Sally Stevens, Emily Vigno, Cara Crowther, Bob Gurwitz, Adam Giles, Joey Adams, Basanti Miette, Patrick Halliday, Jessica Tulis and myself. And the questions that Fran outlined about the process are restated in this letter, so I won't, um, belabor the point. But, um, we formulated this letter today because we value these people. And I, this is my twenty-first year in teaching and nineteen of those years have been here in Shelburne. And we longed for the day that we would have people as highly skilled and trained as Alyssa and Jan and Carol Chamberlain to meet the needs of our students. And, um, and it was a solution to hire three highly trained people instead of a special educator. And so I see this as one of those waves in education that, you know, in a couple of years, we may come back and say, oh, that didn't really work. But the process, uh, that was used was painful. And I, I think we can do better. I'm very hopeful about that. And, um, we need to do better because these are very difficult positions to fill. And we've struggled to fill those positions and we need to find better ways to communicate so that people feel respected and valued because these are phenomenal people. And, um, you could not tell today in their demeanor how impacted their lives are by the way this was handled. I, uh, saw so many smiles and the focus was on the kids as it should be. And so I just want you to know that as a faculty, um, those of us who had a chance to, wanted to stand with them and, and say, let's look at this process and see how we can do a better job.
Lisa Phelps, if you don't know me, if I haven't had your children. I'm here, I guess I'm the brave one, to share, um, thoughts for people who didn't feel comfortable signing or being here. School's challenging. It's, it's a place where people are feeling very vulnerable. And, I don't know why I'm like this, a little bit like you're not sure what's coming around the corner. Case in point, um, there's a new, I understand more about some of the thinking about some of the changes that are being proposed from having sat here. But I think the request is, um, there's so many moving things at one time. And it's obvious that things are being done hastily, a lack of consideration. We're all in it for the kids and there are some of us that are, um, not entirely sure that changing the six, eight team structure, uh, at this point of the year. I found out Monday afternoon, thank you for letting me know, before the staff meeting on Tuesday. We're just not all there. And, um, we're wondering, um, about the timing of it all and whether or not we will be able to do our best for the kids. And, um, I don't want to belabor it, but it has not, it's been a very long time since I've seen people, um, feeling uncertain about job security or, or speaking up. And this isn't anything I haven't shared with our administrators and we're just still trying to work on that. And, uh, we understand that as an administrator, um, you can be, you know, think of yourself as a benevolent dictator and, and do what's best. But, um, we feel that it would all go much better if we were all there with you. Thank you.
I do. I'm Carol Speck. Um, I'm a math interventionist at Shelburne. And, and as I'm listening to the presentation and everything, I'm, I'm so glad I was here because I like to hear the full ideas. And, um, I was not able to attend the meeting on Monday to other obligations. So I, I just kind of see it, you know, in summarizing, it almost seems like we have this need of a new. we have this need of a new, another special educator, because there's a, a growth in the population. But I also see that we have this need for the three people that are also providing these services now. And it, and it does come somewhat to monies, because you are trying to make a change with zero dollars effect. So I think we gotta kinda think of it that way. You know, if, is there any way, I don't know what Shelburne's funding's like, can you at this point pull funds from one area? Do a little bit of both, or, or whatever? You know, do we look at it from another angle? I'll just put that out there.
Cindy, did you wanna think?
I'm just standing.
You're the last, you're the last of the.
I have an opinion per se.
Not that I can speak too more articulately than anybody else would have.
My name's Patty Pazza, I am Carol's cohort. Carol and I are the two math interventionists, Kate, and we are specialists at the same level, that Alyssa and Jan. I'm gonna just piggyback on what Carol thought. You can tell we work together, because I was thinking exactly the same thing she was, as to how powerful it would be if we could find a way to have the special educator and the specialists in what they do, and how powerful that would be for the students. Or some combination of that. In light of Alan's information at the end of your presentation about that special educator, sounds to me like it will not be 100% special ed in the classroom, delivering the services that these guys help to deliver, that part of their responsibility is going to be in the planning room. So that's going to leave a gap in their time to co-teach and to deliver the services. And that was information that I did not know about until this evening. So I'm like Carol, I'm glad I came and got all the pieces of this. So I would just ask if, before this decision is made, if we could think out of the box and think creatively and have flexible thinking about this, as my training and best practices has been teaching me.
Math.
Hey, that's what I do. Just that maybe there is a more creative way to handle this situation than to say, we are eliminating these three people who are so valuable to our students.
I think we're done. At least we've done round one.
Can I, I just wanna add on one thing. Despite anything that's here, anything that's going on, your, the kids there will not know. Every one of us shows up there every day, and we've just put it aside, and we're there for the kids, 100%.
Thank you, thanks very much for your comments, appreciate it.
Did you have any questions for us before we depart?
No, I, I do have a question for Cindy, I think, and it's relative to the point that Fran brought up, I just discussed it with Russ quickly. And it is on here twice, that it's a discussion matter and an action matter. Are we time limited in order to make the action? Is that why we're being asked to make this action today?
It's time, it's, there's a time crunch. Letters technically, super technically, we have to notify people 30 days in advance that they're losing their job. We've not done that, so that would be like a July, we haven't done that. What we've tried to do is align it with the issuance of letters of intent, which happens May 15th. The board's meeting is May 14th. To Fran's point, there is a rift committee process that would have started, if you made a decision, we would have had an informal, if you make a decision tonight, we'd have an informal conversation, let people know, get the, have the official committee meeting, where we hope we know who's resigning, who's leaving, who might have bumping rights, and try and figure that out as a part of the committee. Doesn't take away anybody's right to file a grievance or anything like that, but at least we think we all are on the same page on what's about to happen. That's a process that takes time, especially with this group, because it's, it's complicated, because of the different bumping in multiple categories and where people may wanna bump. It's not like teachers, you bump in a category and you kinda run out of option. In this, this particular group, they can bump in intensive, non-intensive, and then what do those people do, it's, it's a domino game. But if the board waited until May 14th, could we still do that process? Yes, we can still do that process.
So, let me ask you this. If the board approves this, and I'm not even sure if we have to approve it, maybe we do, maybe we don't. Because, you know, Fran, you, you had said something to the effect of, you know, putting this before the voters. We don't put personnel decisions in front of the voters.
I didn't say that.
When we, well, you, you made some comment, and, and I don't mean to misquote you, misinterpret you, but you made some comment about this wasn't known to the voters, or something to that effect, when, when the budget was out there. We put out a budget, and the only things that are called out for separate voting are a couple of articles here and there, typically on fund balance, buying buses, bonds, and that sort of thing. But, you know, I guess my question, and it does say below, you know, discussion matters, any action to be taken, if any, would occur at a future meeting. Is that a requirement, or is that just common practice?
It's common practice.
Because certainly, and especially for those who are going to be most affected by this, and people who may be looking for new jobs, the sooner the decision is made, the better, in my view, because of the timing of hiring that's going to go on, whether within CSSU or, or in other school districts potentially. So that, you know, if, if I'm the one who's on the bubble, I wanna know sooner rather than later. And so potentially dragging this out until May 14th, I'm not sure serves anybody very well, both in terms of the person we might wanna be hiring. We, we would have, you know, a better candidate pool if we start this process sooner. And again, for anybody who may be losing their job, the sooner they're able to be out there looking for a position, I would think the chances of their finding, you know, suitable employment in a position they wanna be in is better as well. So, you know, we could sit here and, and discuss and, and talk about tonight whether there are some things from the process that we perhaps, and I say we collectively, the board and the administration, could have handled better? Sure, you know, maybe we could have. But at the same time, we're, you know, now faced with a decision. And I guess to my mind, as long as we are not, you know, doing anything that is either contrary to the contract, contrary to state law, or CSSU and SCS policy, you know, whether or not the process was done as well as it could have been is almost irrelevant.
My question was just related to the agenda, because the agenda says one thing, and then it's also a discussion item. So I didn't know how it could, you know, could be both things. But obviously, that's.
I, I think, you know, I mean frankly, I think that, that line is, you know, almost part of the template. And arguably should have been stricken from there, because it, yes, it does look in, you know, contradictory with what it is, but it also doesn't appear that that's a.
And I think the only thing that all of us here are asking is that you really take the time to really think about it. If, you know, if, if you can think about it enough within the next few minutes, great. If, if not, and you're unclear about it, then I would say then you need to wait. But that's certainly not up to me.
All right. So that answers that question. Do we have any other comments from the board? Any questions about, any discussion?
Well.
In terms of process?
In terms of this, no, not the process, but actual 6-2, which.
So we're gonna be asked to vote on, to approve this?
We can just, I think we can, I, we as a board haven't discussed what we've heard here, what we've heard here amongst ourselves. We need to discuss 6-2, and then in that discussion, we'll decide whether or not. Just like last month, we decided not to vote on something, which was an action item. We can decide not to vote on it today, table it to another month, or not?
I, I think, I think we can vote to table it. I think we can also, you know, somebody make a motion to approve the reduction in force recommended, have further discussion before we vote.
Right.
And then vote on it. So.
Tonight?
Yeah. But, you know, we, we can decide to table it, but, you know.
I would, I would say we table it.
I'm, I'm with Bob, I'm not ready to vote tonight.
I don't think that we followed what is a customary course of, you know, advise and consent and, you know, consideration. I think Jan raised a good point about, you know, have we considered, you know, repurposing the same people? They know the kids. I mean, in terms of coming up the learning curve with kids, it would, it would work very smoothly. They may not be licensed, but, you know, it's, I think, you know, as part of the process, we should have given this due consideration. I, I'm not ready to.
So, what you're proposing is, we make a motion to discuss this?
I'm just saying that, that's one way that we could decide to handle this tonight. I mean, we, we're still in, you know, discussion phase here. Yes, if, if, if we did it that way. You know, I, but, you know, I guess since we're, we're still in discussion matters. Bob, I, I look at this as, you know, like many structural and personnel matters that, you know, we're asking the board, or we're asking the administration for their recommendation, and that we're not micromanaging these decisions. And clearly, to me, this is something that both the SCS administration, as well as at the supervisory union level, has given us a great deal of thought. And this is the direction that, that we're going as an SU. So, you know, unless we wanna be micromanaging this sort of organizational decision process that, you know, I mean, I'll, I'll tell y'all right up front, I'm gonna vote to support the administration on this. This is their recommendation, the direction that they wanna go. And I recognize that it has, you know, human costs for people in this, in this room. But I, I'm not prepared to start second guessing the administration on, on this type of decision.
I mean, I would, you know, respectfully disagree. I mean, I don't think it's micromanagement. I mean, we've, you know, we're here as representatives of the town. You know, as you said, you just got this. We just got it as well, and have not had time to digest it. And, you know, if you look at the caliber of people, I'm not in, don't feel comfortable about letting this caliber of people just walk out of the door. If this were my business, I wouldn't let that happen until I had all the facts. And I don't feel we have all the facts at this point. So I would.
So, so what do you need to hear from the administration so that you'll feel like you have all of the facts?
Well, I think we need to, you know, I think, you know, the option of using some of the people that we currently have, I don't know if that's been explored. I mean, so far from the administration, what we've heard is that, you know, we're going back to our retreat last year when, you know, the goals were for AIP, or AYP, and now that's circling back into, you know, this whole, you know, restructuring, if you will. So I just, I mean personally, I'm not comfortable.
So can one of the three of you speak specifically to the limitations of the three staff in question versus the one you may hire? Is it a licensing issue, is it a certifications issue, or something like that?
And before you, just one other thing. I mean, I just don't see how one person is gonna get, you know, you say you're already short with three people that we have today. So you're bringing one person with more responsibility, more meetings, more overhead. I mean, how are you gonna get it done? I mean, I see this as a revolving door. Another special educator, another special educator, and at the end of the day, you know, the budget's through the roof.
When I hear that, that these current special educators, between them work 75 to 80 hours per week with 40 students, and how is one person, as we say, gonna supplant that as well as taking on administrative duties and the planning room duties? I also don't, unless you can really tell me what your plan is for that and how you see that that's gonna work out, I'm not comfortable with approving that kind of a, a change. Again, as a board member, I'm responsible for voting for this. I'm not just gonna give a blanket vote to something that, that's here if my name is voting for it.
So, so then I'll ask you the same question I asked him. What facts do you need from the administration to feel like you can vote on this?
So I just asked Alan, how he sees that one person.
But I, because I, I think they've described a different model of how they wanna be delivering education and, and special education with this co-teaching. And so, I guess the, the assumption that, or, you know, what I'm taking away from this is that it is a different model, and you're going to be delivering this differently. It, it's not saying that somehow this one person is going to be delivering 75 or 80 hours a week of, you know, the same stuff that three people were doing. It, it's reallocating across more than just that one person, how these services and how this education is going to be delivered. It, it's not just a one-for-three swap. It, it's got more moving parts than just that one person is coming in to do the job of three people.
And I think Alan said, but he hasn't figured out yet how that's gonna work out. Is that right?
There was the question where we asked the question of how many total special educators you had. You're adding one extra.
Right.
And that brings your total count to 11 to 12. So you have this staff that's gonna be allocated to roughly 11 each person, to 11 kids? Is that the model that we're talking about? Is that the model changing, that eventually you're gonna bring, bring that census down by hiring more special, more licensed special educators to do this?
I don't think I ever wanna say this, but I know, I think our system, you know, I think with the addition of only special educator, I think that's what the Shelburne system can kind of support, kind of thinking longitudinally, of the number of special educators within our building to kind of meet our needs, unless we had a huge population growth, which is unlikely, because our population has been declining and so rising a little bit. But I think, we're talking about a system delivery model shift. We can't replicate contact hours by one profession, you know, that one to three. Russ is correct. We're talking about rewriting service pages, you know, so there's less pull-out services. There's more time in the classroom, provided by the, you know, high-quality first instruction by a certified expert, certified teacher.
And these, these folks are wonderful, they're, there is absolutely no doubt, I just wanna put that on the table. We haven't moved a population of students, so we're looking at a different way to do it. That is what we're asking. So it's not about what they have been doing from this, you know, in the past or what they do currently with students. They are trained individuals, no one's, no one's questioning that. What we're doing is we're responding to the fact that we have a population of students who for 10 years, I believe, has not moved. And I don't know exactly how long these folks have worked specifically with that population of students. But when a model doesn't work, you don't keep, in my estimation at least, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different outcome. So whether it's, it's not really about the people so much, that's not what we're really talking about. And that's a really hard thing to say, and nobody wants to say that. But it's really about, how do you change a model? How do you change a system to make it more reactive so that you end up with less children who are not successful in school?
So Patty, the only thing, you're saying that the only way to change the model is to have a special educator deliver the services?
I, I'm not saying that, Tim. I'm saying it's one way that we came up with, working on it. And no, I am absolutely not saying it's the only way. And we based a lot of this, as Alan had said, on effective schools research. So we have looked at a lot of that. And, and I know it's hard sometimes, because when you're not looking through the lens of, is this going to impact me? Then you don't necessarily see a presentation that somebody delivers, or you don't necessarily think of what happened in a faculty meeting or an in-service as a presentation regarding AYP and. as a presentation regarding AYP and think, oh, that means I might get a cut. I appreciate that because, no, nobody says that. But we've had these conversations about AYP and about changes and about systems and about effectiveness and effective schools research, and we've had all of this since I have been there. So, so it's been talked about, but yeah, at the twenty thousand foot level, if you will. And these, these folks, and not everybody, because Mr. Grant Davenport, excuse me. He may not have heard it, but, you know, most of them do hear. Maybe he has, actually. Little pillow talk there, but anyway. But, you know, he may not know it, but they, they've heard it. But again, it's been at this level, and, and yes, absolutely. So they may not have thought about it in, in terms of them.
So bring us into it. So I'm sitting here thinking, like, if something isn't working.
So there is, there is. There is one aspect of the way this is, like, you, you can speak, but we can't have conversations during the discussion. Okay.
So Kathy?
And for Russ?
At, at the risk of putting words in Alan's mouth, I don't think Alan was saying that he doesn't know exactly what's going to happen with this move. I think he was more responding to, you know, my questions about what's the endgame with this and where do we end up if co-teaching is successful where we're piloting it? And, because my concern is, is, you know, to, to fully implement this, does it mean we need twenty special educators when today we have nine? And John's shaking his head, which makes me feel better. But I, I, I think that was more an Alan. Please correct me if, if I misinterpreted that.
Absolutely. And the other, the other piece that I think is kind of being misconstrued here is we, we are still sitting with fifteen classroom paras. So each, each of these teams that has a special educator still has a team para. Still has a para-professional that has training and the ability to implement the, some of the interventions that we're talking about with a direct link to a special educator to provide that guidance rather than it happening in absentia. It's really, a key part of MTSS is creating those collaboration, those communication links directly. So those individuals are still there. The, the other, the other piece that I would add, let me get my thought there. In terms of, oh, one of the questions, and we've had this conversation, that we, we would, we think one of the greatest shames that we do in our system is utilizing highly-trained para-professionals for duties such as lunch recess.
Or taking somebody to the bathroom.
Yeah, you know, walking a class, that's, that's not where we want our highest-trained people. And so built into this, I mean, the other, the other capacity piece that we're adding to the table is, you know, it's happening in Heinsburg right now. You've been real helpful in supporting the development of a Part II program, which brings on part-time staff who, that's honestly what they like to do. We have folks working in our building from three to six that love to go out and play with kids. And, you know, that is in terms of, yes, we are losing some, but we're going to shift. And we're, our long-term goal is to do whatever we can to have the paras that we have. There, there is evidence that paras make a difference for kids, but they, it's a different structure. It's, it's in that high-quality instruction. The para's supportive, the para's there, the para's able to give that just-in-time support. And so we're going to utilize part-time staff, and that was one of the questions of where's the safety issue coming from? Okay, we'll, we'll look at hiring people because we don't want those people in the system. We don't want those, those highly-trained people doing jobs that are so much kind of below. It'd be like, my, you don't want to pay me to go out and sand the sidewalk? That, I can, I can do that. But I think that would concern you in that same manner, and I imagine it concerns you, you know, some of the ways we deploy personnel. So we're looking at, the MTSS is as much about deployment of personnel and using them in the most effective means possible. And as Patty pointed out, it's just looking at the research that's out there that says that makes a difference. Therefore, we're asking you, can we move in that direction?
I think that, I just feel as though we're, we're acting too precipitously here. If you want an analogy for reconfiguration, because that's what, the word that keeps popping up. When we decided to reconfigure the grades with the looping and the, you know, the, that was, I mean, that was a very open process. There were a lot of people involved in that. And this is really not much different. I mean, this is a reconfiguration of the way the education is delivered, the way the school is, is administered. And I, I think that we, we really need to give it a little more time and involve a little more, a few more people.
Yeah, I think, can, can I respond to that? Because I think one of the challenges is, is if you, if you, if you look at the structural change in the big picture, it, it's not a substantive change, Bob. I would, I would disagree with that. What, what's challenging is, and what, what gets the emotion going is it's a decision that has faces. It's a decision that has, has people sitting in front of us saying, that's, that's my job. And the other thing is, in terms of the, the rush on the process, is what, what is, what is happening quickly is the direct engagement of the people impacted in the conversation of, what do you think about my eliminating your job? I, I, I think I know the answer to that, and, and I could, I could say that to anybody. And so what we've been having conversations, and we, we have had conversations all along, but do we, do we draw the people? I think it's dangerous to draw the people in to the conversation who have the most personal stake in it. Because I, as, my role, I see my role as a, as a manager and a leader is to get up here, draw input from the system, from folks that can, can look at it objectively, and then make the best decision with that. And that, that will feel rushed. But it, it will feel rushed to those individuals.
Can I ask if you have engaged Molly and Elaine in these decision-maker matters also?
I would say Megan has been more a part of it than I. Because I'm kind of the general. But, and I, I certainly think Elaine is aware. The only reason I text in the middle of a meeting is because sometimes I'm saying, you might want to come. So I have texted for other folks to join us, to go on in the conversation. But, but I am aware of MTSS and what's going on at the state level and the guide, the practice guide that has now been put out by the state. And one of the features in that, though I'm not close to this circumstance, I very much care about all of these people and the way we provide services for kiddos that reflects movement in their performance. What I do know is that in that guide, that is now a conversation in almost every school in our state. And in fact, you know, I've, I was part of writing that guy, for heaven's sakes. But nonetheless, is that piece that's controversial that is about our most highly-trained people working with our most tangled learners? And in, and, and there is a certification issue. There isn't any way around that. So if we're going to place some people in classrooms to do classroom instruction with a teacher, there is a certification issue, and we don't, we're bound by that. That's law. So, you know, if we want to move to a different model, which MTSS is, is describing for our state at this time, and the research behind it is about joining classroom practice with specialty practice. One of the features of doing that is about changing your model of delivery and, and who that is if you're going to bring both those people into the classroom. So I think that's, you know, I, I've been sitting on the periphery of this listening, but I can talk to the, to the framework of MTSS and the background of it. Not to the process of exactly how this is for everybody.
Thank you. This is all very helpful to me in helping me to be comfortable with whatever decision I'm going to make.
And I would also point out that it's, because the conversations have been happening, I mean, at this exact point, I don't know whether they're done or not. CVU is having nearly an identical conversation right now. To a T. I mean, our letters are drafted similar, it is. Because it's grounded in the same research, the same leadership conversation, saying, this is, this is an SU movement. It is, and, and we support it. Yep, Elaine is here. That's Megan.
Thank you. And Molly. Perfect time.
What I guess I wanted to hear is, to what extent is this? Come on up, Megan. Uh, you can't hide back.
Megan, come to the table.
To, to what extent is this just where we're moving as a whole supervisory union? And, and, you know, as Alan said, at CVU, having a conversation, and obviously you guys are walking into the middle of a pretty lengthy and discussion on what Alan and Patty are proposing for, you know, changes to the model for special ed and the co-teaching and MTSS, if I got all the acronyms right. So just wanting to understand, you know, from a supervisory union perspective, and, and I guess some of the board members, if I can speak briefly for them, feel that we're being asked to make a decision, you know, have a discussion, being asked to make a decision in fairly short order for something that does have some pretty big implications to it. So, you know, I guess to what extent is this going on at the supervisory union level? You know, it sounds like CVU's having a similar discussion. Sounds like maybe Williston might be a little bit ahead of us on, on terms of implementing this sort of thing. I don't know where the other K-8s are, so if you can kind of speak to some of those things, that would be helpful.
So I'm going to speak mostly to the, the work that's going on around intervention systems and what kind of supports the direction that Shelburne's trying to go, and not so much about process. Partially because I wasn't involved in this part of the conversation. But there is a, a pretty, and, and I may be saying the same thing that these folks said just a few minutes ago, but there is a very strong and solid research base, not just within CSSU, but within the field of intervention in general, that talks about making sure that we have service delivery models that allow us to provide to our most struggling students, very high-quality instruction by very expert teachers. So the context isn't unique to, to Shelburne. And I think we've, the years that we've spent studying intervention practices and studying models that allow us to, to put those into place are in alignment with that. So what's being proposed, there are several other schools in the SU right now and several years ago who have moved in this direction. The schools that have done this, actually to a much bigger scale than, than this particular proposal, have found success with their model. And the, the schools that are having the conversation now are, you know, proposing very similar service delivery changes. So from a, is this the direction that the SU is going in? I would say the SU is, is very much supportive of having service delivery models that allow us to provide rich, expert instruction to our most tangled learners. What that looks like in each building might be a little bit different. But it's certainly what they're looking at is in alignment with the work and study that we've been doing around intervention.
So if, as a board, we decide to delay this decision, to not approve it for this year, are you and, and the administration going to be asking us to basically make the same decision a year from now? And what, what are the implications of, of turning it down?
I mean, I, I can give my perspective, and, but I would, I would look at this.
Well, I mean, a, a year from now, Act 153 is going to be even more fully implemented than it is today.
Right.
And, and so that becomes even much more of an SU decision at that point than, than it is today.
Right. I can say I don't see us reversing direction as an SU in terms of moving to service delivery models that allow us to have expert staff. So, so in terms of if it doesn't happen now, will we come back around to this conversation? Probably, if not the same conversation, a similar one. Just because there's such a, such a solid, we know so much more about intervention now, and, and really everything kind of points in this direction of responsive teaching, and it will be, it will start to become difficult for schools to implement the intervention systems that we're studying without very expert people to do them.
Can I ask Megan if you could just clarify? Because being unique is sometimes a very good, and I want to preface that with this, but we, we are unique in terms of the SU in having a category of special ed specialists. Is that correct?
Yes. You're not the only SU that has specialists in their building, but each specialist functions somewhat differently.
I would also say that Megan, Molly, and I were at a meeting yesterday at which the secretary, the new Secretary of Education came and addressed the superintendents in the region, special student support services directors and curriculum directors. So we're all there, all of us. It's our yearly meeting. And she addresses us, and she is not talking about interventions, but she mentioned that as a state, what we're talking about is in, is in their radar. Because the research is so clear that the neediest kids need the highest quality instruction. And so what does that mean, and how do you organize your workforce so that that happens? It's not, it's a conversation that's not going to go away regardless of what happens here tonight. So, yeah, we're all, we're going to be looking at that partly because the work of TILT and the work that we're doing in the SU, but also partly because we're going to be hearing it from the state level. And so she framed it around the work that they're doing with the new education quality standards and the reviews that they're going to be doing in schools and the kinds of data they're going to be looking at. I don't know if either of you want to add to that, but.
Question, and, and I think Alan had mentioned this too, but the, the tangled learners, we get the best results for the tangled learners when they are given the highest quality of instruction? Is that, did I understand that correctly? What is the highest quality of instruction? Is it the instruction of the, the classroom, the licensed classroom teacher? Or is it the, what about the special attention that's given by a very highly-qualified specialist? I mean, isn't that similarly high-quality instruction?
I think the high, what the research would tell us is that the high-quality instruction comes from expert teachers who are, who are able to instantly and on an ongoing basis use the, how the student is presenting and use the data that they're generating to be able to adjust instruction. And, and having an increased presence of professional staff. So, so more professional intervention, special education staff available to our general ed teachers actually allows more time for either the classroom teacher or the special educator to be that targeted provider.
And I think as Molly pointed out, in the co-teaching model, whether we like it or not, state law says that those experts both have licenses.
So, you know, it's a license that's saying what the highest quality of instruction is.
I think that's a little bit.
Qualifies them?
I, I think that's a little bit of it, and I don't, you know, I, I can just imagine how Alyssa and Jan are feeling hearing, you know, talk about most expert teachers and, and highly-qualified and all of that. But, and, and this is not meant to disparage you at all, but if, if the model is co-teaching and if the state law says you have to have two licensed people, that's the, you know, without the licenses, then, you know, you can't run that model. So it's not, it's not anything necessarily who's, who's good and who's bad, but in that model, you got to have license, you got to have two licensed people to do it.
So do we have any further questions on the discussion matter? I think we'll act on this or not act on this a little bit later as we go through the agenda, because that's not on, it's not where we are right now. But any further questions for Alan or Elaine or anyone?
For Russ?
No.
No.
Thanks, Dawn.
Thanks, Fran.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
See you in the morning.
Oh, does this computer go to that room? I couldn't find, I couldn't figure out the password in here. Ask your question.
Do you want to go back? Stay.
Actually, I hear my question was, you know, is that just because that, Cindy thought it was, you know, that's just kind of our typical practice, that's not necessarily any law that says we have to do it that way.
Right.
And, and, you know, could have, should have probably just stricken that home or something.
Right, right. Because we could have had the same discussion just at this part of the agenda during that. Right. So we usually try to anticipate if we're going to be having a lot of people, and then we know that we'd rather have the, the input at one meeting and the decision at another. That's really, that's our own design.
But we're not required to.
No, that's our own design.
Thank you.
So where are you on the agenda?
So we, yeah, so we basically lumped.
If you all don't mind, I, just to leave unless you need me for the action matter item, and I'm happy to stay if you do.
No, I, I think what, what you told us was, it's a guideline, we can act if we want to.
Yep.
And we'll decide that when that time comes.
And it won't, I mean, it'll make my RIF process more complicated if you wait, but I can, I can still comply with the contract.
Okay.
And, and Cindy, just to clarify, you know, the, the point Fran made about committee, to me seemed to be kind of muddling a couple things.
She's muddling a couple of things.
Right. We don't, we don't have a, it's not a committee process to propose a RIF.
Decision.
That's not it. The committee process is when the decision is made to have a RIF, we bring a committee together because it's a very complicated contractual piece.
Yep.
And so what we've done over the past week is we have notified far more people than they will maybe potentially RIF, and there are so many permutations, we've had the conversation that said, this is the proposal that's on the table, we want you to know that, we want you to know your contractual rights, that you can be here to speak to it, all those things, and a decision will be made later, and Fran and Cindy are your resources to talk to. And those are the conversations we had, which raises angst in the system. It, it does raise tremendous angst in the system, which is one of those decisions leaders make of, when do I raise the angst in the system? Do I raise it early? Do I raise it late? Hindsight always being 2020, you don't know which decision is going to be the tipper. So, just kind of making sure I was right on that, that I understood it. Okay.
Any other questions for Cindy?
And I will stay.
No, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine.
Finally, I think.
All right, so we've done 401, substituted 62 as 42, so we're moving on to the principal's report.
Oh, wow.
We're gonna, we're gonna go through this really fast.
Yeah.
We're gonna go like this. As a matter of fact, we're gonna go in a blink of an eye. You ready?
I'd like you guys to know that I heard this report last night, and it was acceptable.
It was acceptable, yes.
We celebrated Vermont Rights Day in a wonderful way by taking work from all of our students, hanging it on, throughout our building.
We've had, we've had some cool concerts. I'm leaving tomorrow to go to Montreal with the band, we're going to be up there for two days. Tim Buckingham's doing a great job, and, yeah, I'll come back next month and tell you what a fantastic job they did performing at a couple international schools.
We want to congratulate Joplin James, he was one of the recipients of the Shucks Award the other night, great, great event. I attended and listened to Vasanti while she shared many emails of his many students who talked about his great community service to Shel, to Tana Shelburne. Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Should know, the Vermont Legislature has given a citation for that energy star, would continue to be recognized for Dave Kelly's great work, that really is a kudo in his hat. And there's the end of your schedule, looking forward to Dave Connery's phenomenal graduation speech. So that will be at, what, probably about, what do you think, Russ?
Not going to talk about the planning room. Don't want any mic.
Just stop those old ones.
And it is an obligation that after Russ has always come and danced with us on the boat, then, so, we're expecting that.
Yeah, I'm a pillar for that.
Yeah.
The one thing you didn't comment on, which I thought was really cool last night when you said it, is that there was a moment this past month where everybody in the school stopped what they were doing and wrote for seven minutes.
That's, yeah, I'm sorry. I was trying to get through really fast.
But it must have been really cool to walk through the school at that point in time and be like, where's all the noise?
We didn't, because we were writing.
Yeah, that's right. We didn't.
Everyone writing.
Okay.
And I think if we just tell you that right now, our enrollment is 768 students, and we had a wonderful day today with our first day of kindergarten screening, and we have 76 students signed up for today and tomorrow for our screenings. Awesome, awesome event.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Can you please change that date?
We did.
You still have April 2013? It says August.
It is, and you're printed, it's corrected in the Google Doc.
I was gonna say, it's right here, it's 14.
Last night's document was right.
Was right, oh, good, okay.
So going forward, I should have it right.
But thanks for letting me know that, Kathy, I did.
You also mentioned on there, I think, that there were like eight students in other grades that have enrolled, you know, new students and no transfers out yet.
Yeah, it's early for us to know transfers, and I'll just keep you updated on that, because I think we're watching Harrington Place, and we still don't have.
Because it said only two first graders, and, and, you know, we typically get six, eight, 10, something like that, coming in for first graders.
We should get 8.6 first graders. All right.
CSSU.
The debrief, yeah, so highlighted in that were, so the allocation of special education spending and how we're going to do that, I think we didn't really have an active discussion on it, people asked a lot of questions, and it's either going to come down to, what is it, ADM or?
ADM or equalized students. It seems to be where it's going to be, and, and the administration was asked for a recommendation. Unfortunately, the one that I think is likely to be the recommendation and that is likely to get approved by the SU is also going to be the one that's most expensive for Shelburne. But that could change when, you know, depends on who's in which buildings and new ADM counts, but if it were done today, it, it would look ugliest for us. But that could change, and, and, you know, it's sort of, once we're into it, and it probably is the best and most fair way to do it, it's only the shock the first year. And, you know, by that point, age 883, is that the one?
Well, if that comes into play, that evens other things out, because it's different towns that benefit from that. That was an interesting, kind of looking at those numbers.
There was some good legislative update stuff. One of them is the one that, I guess, I don't think it's going to clear the House this year, or that it's not going to go to the Senate or something, but, you know, the one about consolidation or, you know, governance changes, seems like it's getting some real, some legs, more, much more so than it has in the past. And they did pass, the House did pass, I think, the tax one, whatever that one is. So we are looking at a, probably what, three cent decrease from what we had been looking at, the tax rate. So not quite as ugly as, as things had looked once. But if you're paying income sensitivity, you're going, you're going to feel it more this year than what it had been.
Yep. That's, any other highlights? We did talk about the job shares policy and, I was, it was unclear to me, Elaine, what, so we have, we had the policy and then the, there's the second document? That's not a policy?
So there's a procedures.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
It clearly was adopted by the board in 2000.
Okay.
But unearthed a month ago.
Yeah.
Or less than a month ago. So that would kind of be the basis for having, starting a conversation. So I'm committed to clarifying that, being, you know, much more clear about when we say short-term, what do we mean by short-term? What are the provisions under which we would approve? And, you know, what's the timeline? Because if you look at those procedures, we would have, the teacher would have been submitting a job share request in October.
October 15th, right.
In October, and we would have had plenty of time to, like, talk about, okay, well, what's the impact of this? What else is going on budgetarily? Do we have RIFs? Do we have this, that, or the other thing? Because every time there's some other constraint, that ties your hands more and more. You know, if it's, if you're just, if you're hiring people and everything's hunky-dory, well, no problem. It's at the point that other things are happening that all of a sudden, instead of being able to look at the full complement of employees you have with their licensures and expertise and everything and deciding where everyone should be to best, you know, staff the system, you know, once you've got those constraints, you no longer have that full ability to do that. So in the next year, we'll definitely clean that up.
Okay. All right. So 53 Facilities Committee?
Okay, quick report on that. Doran Whittier are working with us right now very well. Our committee actually is growing. We have a, one community member who has joined us, Chris Capsalis. We are looking, I think, for another community member from the parent community to join us. We have a teacher that I believe is going to be joining us as well, hopefully.
Peter Devlin will be coming and going, because he's consultant on acoustics, but we're looking for a permanent member.
Remember, at least one.
Yep. So right now, Doran Whittier is working on a site and building assessment report, having what they call squatters, what is it called?
Squatter sessions.
Squatter sessions, where they sit with teachers and students even, and administration, and gathering all of the information, traffic and pedestrian circulation, as well as drainage, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, security and access control, handicap accessibility, life safety and building code compliance, and then conditions interior and exterior, windows, walls, doors, roofing, et cetera, the whole, the whole thing. They're really very complete in what their assessment is going to be. And then they're going to do an assessment of the educational space, use and functions and layouts, and the whole thing that was talked about tonight, which is the 21st century learning models. They've been educating us on that in the facilities meetings as well, planning meetings. Development of a range of options and with cost estimates based on the findings of the study, written report, and then presentation of findings to the school board and the public. We're still shooting for a, perhaps a bond vote, November 2014. At least that's what their marching orders are, to get us ready for that. We're heavily into a, a public information campaign at this point, and last night at the PTO meeting, I believe Alan confirmed that they're going to schedule a community forum that will be the purpose to provide Doran Whittier the opportunity to share the findings of their building space assessment with the public. That's going to be after the next PTO meeting, May 13th, at 7 o'clock. We're working on perhaps building a Facebook page. We're going to be going out on Front Porch Forum, where they suggest us going to Rotary and so forth and so on, so we're really going to be going out to the community with all of this in order to keep them informed and hopefully get their support for what we're going to put forward to them. And I would ask the board their permission, I think this may be a first, actually, to write a Board's Corner article for the Shelburne News about an update on what's happening with the Facilities Committee, again, in order to get the information out there. The last one was in November, so we have a lot of updates to do on that.
The first being that you're asking that you can do it. Nobody's forcing you to do it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was wondering.
We're not hunting for a board forum.
Yeah, we're not hunting. It's like, will you let me, please?
If someone is volunteering to do it, it's the first.
And that's the first, exactly. And so I think that's it.
I think you can be the first, the second, the third.
Without any argument.
All in favor?
Probably, yeah.
Question for you. You mentioned a bond vote in November 2014. I think that's the first time I've heard that, is the timing.
Oh, okay. Right, we've been discussing that within the Facilities Committee.
And, and so I guess I have, you know, a couple of questions and thoughts on that. One is, is it realistic? And, and also, is that the best time to do it?
Well, I think what we had talked about in terms of the bond vote was to be ready to go at that point, and then the board is going to have to decide if it's go time or not.
And, and that's another thing that I'm requesting, is that we put for our board retreat, an agenda item for the SES board retreat, discussion with the Facilities Committee on things like that, timing, on amounts, reasonable amounts, so that we really can take the pulse within the board, have discussion within the board, because Doran Whittier feels that's important for them to know as well.
I think, you know, in terms of when it would have to be warned, and in early November election, you know, I don't know if it's got to have like 30 days notice and, and things like that. I mean, you know, especially since we tend not to do much as a board over the summer.
Right.
It really kind of compresses the timeframe. And then, you know, then the other aspect of it, you know, I mean, for board discussion is kind of strategically, is it best to do it in November separate of a budget vote?
Well, that's what we have been talking about.
Or, or is it best to have it all together?
And a major shot.
And, and say, this is how, you know, it, this is how it's packaged into, into our budget. This is the, you know, the net effect of, of, you know, the debt, the old debt falling off and the new debt coming on, you know, what, what does that all look like? How, we?
And I believe their recommendation was not to do it.
Doran Whittier's?
With the budget.
With the budget, yeah. That's their experience.
And, and so just to kind of fill in some gaps of our conversation, what, what Dor Whittier's recommendation was, is they felt they could create a fast-track plan for us that at least gets the information, gets proposals on the table with, at least, and we're not, we're not locked into, oh, let's just target March and decide later that November is a timeframe. So they felt that was realistic to do it, with the conversation then becoming, you know, because really what it is, is when do you get to a viable plan? When do you get to something that has numbers attached to it? And they're saying, we can get you to a viable plan in time for a November vote, we'll put that in your hands and you decide what to do with it. Would you want to do it in March? Would you want to do it in November? Do you want to hold on to it and wait another year and do it November 15? I mean, all those options are on the table to kind of be seen as the PR program rolls forward.
And the other piece that they, they want to know from us is what number, or what number range is the board comfortable with, which is what we want to be able to discuss with everybody at the retreat to, to go for a bond vote.
Yep, the magic number, they call it.
Right, the magic number.
Okay. So move on to the next item, which is a kindergarten, sorry, the school calendar? Because my question about the school calendar was?
About the kindergarten?
Kindergarten, do we have, didn't last year we had a separate day, the kindergarteners? This year?
Kindergarteners start a day later, as far as their first day of school.
And we can do that again this year? We will, okay. All right, because?
They actually have, the, two days beforehand, they'll do some testing with students. Do you remember that whole model?
No.
So that, that doesn't impact the calendar, though.
It's just a single grade level.
In terms of the calendar, this is the same calendar, 175 days plus one on March 2nd, I think, is town meeting day, that we had, we added. And then the blue-colored squares are our professional development, parent teacher conference, and service days.
Well, you took off town meeting day. That was on the regional calendar, but it's gone now.
Well, it was a day off.
So it's a professional development day.
And now it's a professional development day. On the regional calendar, it was just a day off.
That's not here on this, this has us going to school on town meeting day.
Right, exactly. We added that. Oh, you mean on the regional calendar?
Mine is blue, and it's professional development. March 2nd is a blue day, Monday.
Yep.
I'm looking at what was?
Look at, look at March.
So, what was released on Tuesday?
Yeah, that, that's a mistake, because that was not, on the, on the regional calendar, March 2nd is not a student day.
Right, so, but?
And we are adding.
And we are adding it as a student day.
Okay, so this is the CSSU calendar that I'm looking at, and it has us going to school on March third?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know how we got to town meeting.
March third is town meeting day. It's a student day.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
We're all on the same place.
So, hopefully we won't have more than one snow day, right? That's what we.
You know, I mean, that was a conversation in Charlotte, too. We could add snow days. They would just get added the next week and then instead of doing what we do, we would do it in reverse.
Yeah.
Some, some dates certain in April, when we feel comfortable, we'll send a note out to all the parents and we'll say, well, instead of the last day being on June nineteenth, it is now on June seventeenth.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? You can do it either way.
It doesn't, and like, two years ago, I think we went into the next week.
Right. You very well might. I mean, and Williston went to the.
It wasn't last year, I think it was the year before.
Williston went to the nineteenth last year.
Right.
So, I will say this, though. I am very strong supporter of both at CVU for their graduation and the eighth grade graduation. We should set that on a date and say, that's the graduation date. CVU was always on that Friday. If they graduate on that Friday, those seniors are gone, even if the underclassmen come. I think traditional day for eighth grade graduation has been Thursday for eighth graders. We set it for Thursday. If we go to school till next Tuesday, the eighth graders graduate on Thursday and we give them a fond farewell. You know, it's, I think that we can make those kinds of dates that are important to families and to people fixed. So, they don't have to worry about that. And then the rest of it, it's not that. Big a deal.
All right. Okay, any other questions on the calendar?
So, you'll be voting on it, actually, next week, next month, I mean.
We already did six-two, we've done six-three. Anybody want to volunteer for another Board's Corner?
I volunteer for two, but I think I'll.
Yeah, I know.
Don't be greedy.
Action Matters and seven-one is approve the playground project, which was, I saw a, some text from Bob.
Do you want me to read it out loud?
Yeah, too.
Okay. So, this is a request for you to approve the playground project as outlined by the administration, including doing primary funding by approving a transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from the anticipated fund balance as of June thirty, two thousand and fourteen, to the construction fund. We'd ask that the board's transfer to the construction fund be preliminary, to be reaffirmed by the board closer to the end of the fiscal year. So, we'll make adjustments if, you know, it looks like right now we can do that, but just in case, Bob said. That's why it's a preliminary figure.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, should I ask for a motion? Oh, I'd like to ask for a motion to set aside these funds for the playground project.
So, I'll make a motion of what Patty read there that Bob's requested.
I'll second that.
I second her. And any discussion?
Do we have quotes?
We are getting quotes. Those are, we started to lay out some rough numbers, I think. Bob wrote up an RFP document with specs, and then we're gonna, and Dave laid out on that yellow piece of paper all the equipment that we have in order to duplicate the playground. And then we're going to send those out and get firm quotes from three folks soon.
So, I want you to know that the, those amounts are between seventy-one thousand three, excuse me, I'm sorry. With the site work, it's eighty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars would be the lowest figure and one hundred two thousand would be the high figure. And that would be to as much as possible replace exactly what's on the playground.
So, we can do it with the hundred grand?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that with the contractor building the playground? Or is that with parents helping?
The low ball would be with parents doing it, and the high ball, the high price would be with the contractor or the playground people doing the, the entire installation.
So, no zip line, no climbing web, no?
There, I think there is a zip line in here. Because I think that we had a zip line and we took it down. So, the original plan, did we do that like, yes, we did. Because I did ask about it. It was kind of a, a zip line that was not a particularly safe zip line. So, we took that one down, but the zip line that we would put in is a.
Super safe zip line.
It's not even going off the ground.
I mean, all, all we're, all we're doing right now is just approving to, to transfer a hundred grand to the, and, and at some point, we will also then have to vote on a contract.
That's correct.
And, and vote on a final amount to take place prior to June thirtieth.
So, once we did the RFP and then we do, put it out to bid, then you vote on that part?
Yep, but you wouldn't want to do an RFP if we weren't actually approving.
Correct.
Some, some number.
And there is some interest in the community to do some fundraising. There's some folks that are interested in doing it. We did have a small community forum, and there's some folks that are interested in helping with fundraising and helping with, you know, inputs on what sort of items might be on playground.
The construction thing would be fun. And we actually did this when we lived in Fairfield, Connecticut.
We've done it up here, too, other playgrounds.
It was great.
Yeah.
It is fun.
I totally, I, somebody said it the other day, they were pretty negative about it, but I, I totally think that it would be a great weekend.
I know, I was really surprised. Somebody said that they didn't think anybody would be around this summer to help.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we'll be there.
I do that at Williston, it was fun.
It is fun. We did it at fine parks.
And you know, I did just want to throw out, too. I did talk to Betsy Siplicky of the Rex Department today. And we had a conversation about not duplicating either what the playgrounds look like at Davis Park and the selling playground, and also about fundraising. And they are doing some fundraising for that playground, as you well know. And so, we talked about ways to not be doing anything against each other, you know, making sure that we're.
Ours is better give to ours.
Tell them we gave her a half-year head start.
That was not the message.
Did you have a chance to follow up on pursuing a Vermont, something from the Vermont State Grants Natural Resources?
I asked Joan Lenis about it, and she just said that there, there are funds for things like that. I have not followed up with her anymore on that. Would you like me to?
Yeah, that'd be great. Because if we could initiate some sort of paperwork to get five, nine, or ten thousand dollars, that would go a long way.
And I, I know that Betsy did get some grant money for the Davis Park one, yes. I think it was through Natural Resources, maybe.
And I want to thank you for all of your, those two meetings. That was great.
You were welcome to.
That was nice, especially last night.
Should we vote now?
So, yes. What do I do now? I said. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. So, we'll get a meeting together after this to put that out.
Got it. Thank you.
That's what we do at this one.
It's good.
So, seven-two is approve the. Pardon?
Co-chairing.
Co-chairing? He's mentoring.
I said co-chair.
So, seven-two is approve the asbestos abatement bid. I know last month we had tabled this, this month because of questions with.
We were going to ask Doran Whittier and the facilities committee about that. And the response was that, well, they asked, was this major asbestos work? Or was it essentially minor asbestos work? The answer was, it's essentially minor asbestos work. Go ahead and do it now. Won't make any difference. There'll be no cost savings with trying to do it with the, any kind of renovations or facilities work that will be done later. So.
So, could I get a motion to approve? Oh, could I, what do I say?
Yeah.
Could I get a motion to approve the asbestos abatement bid?
So, I'm.
May I second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm not comfortable with this bid. We're looking at a difference between a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and seventy-four thousand dollars. We're going to go with, Dave's recommending we go with seventy-four thousand. But at the end, there's a thermal type per foot rate. Is that built into this bid? Or is it in addition to?
What Bob was, what Davis told me is for seventy-four thousand dollar, all elbow abatement will be not made. They've looked at it, they can do it. That would only be if they were to discover something else. They've already come in, they've looked at it, and there is nothing else, so.
Okay, so that's just if, if there's extra.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
There we go, first aye. All right, motion carries.
Do you want me to do asbestos abatement, right?
I'll tell you what, you want to take care of it before the inspector comes along. Because I've just signed off for another school, and it's like, I'm not kidding you, like thirty, forty pages long of to-dos, 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 to-dos. And you start getting that as soon as they find one thing. So, it's just better to take care of it, get it done.
Have a check off. It's better to do it right.
Yeah.
Evidently Dave has worked with this group before, which is why he's recommending that.
Okay, so we move on to seven-three personnel. Seven-three-one, which is the reduction in force, which we've already discussed. I get a motion to act on the reduction in force?
I would make a motion to do a reduction in force of the three para positions as recommended by the administration.
May I get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Comment, you know, if you look at the, right, page here. You were saying, and you're right up on it, that you felt that overall, by the time there, maybe there's some retirements coming and things like that, that a reduction in force may not even be needed. But it appears from the discussion we had earlier that you've already identified the.
Right.
So, take me through the process of how it really.
Yeah, how, I, I can take.
This union workforce.
Right, so, the, the process is that specialists are our most highly compensated professionals. They're, they're all. Par, specialists, excuse me, yeah. And so, there, this particular group of three also has more tenure than a, a group below them. And so, what that gives them is bumping rights. So, they have the right to request a transfer to a position. They can request to become a, an intensive para. And that is a, a reduction in salary. But they have a right to that position. They also have a right to a non-intensive para. So, what we get is this interesting scenario where we would have to ask them, okay, are you interested in being an intensive para? A lot of para professionals are not interested in that position. That is, personal care, it is, our students who are wheelchair, need feeding tubes, need changing, those kind of things. It's an extremely challenging job and might not be what they bargained for, so. But if they were, they would then bump an intensive para. Depending on tenure, an intensive para has a right to bump a non-intensive para, which is like a team para. So, what we had to do was go through and identify all the possibilities. Let's say all three of them say, we want to be intensive paras. We have notified the three lowest-tenured intensive paras that potentially this process is going down. There's going to be some decisions made. You may end up with a RIF, but depending on their tenure, we also had to inform non-intensive paras that, okay, your position is also online. So, the list grew to, I believe, nine para professionals total that we.
We talked to seven.
Yeah, okay.
Plus the job share.
Plus the two job share ones, yeah. So, that's kind of the process that, and that's why there's a RIF committee to pan that out. I mean, once a decision would be made to say, yes, we're going to allow you to do this, then that committee meets, has the conversation, gets the information from these three specialists, who I fully expect, if they want, they have a position in our school, we love to have them. I mean, it's not that we're looking and saying that, we're not trying to get rid of anyone. That's not the intent, but the impact is going to be our most recently hired para professionals. That's who ends up not being in the building. It was people who are not sitting here who won't be in our building next year.
So, are there only three para specialists in the school?
There are.
In that category?
We have three different, let's see, four different categories of para, para specialists that are at that highest level. We have special ed specialists. We have literacy specialists who work under Jensen Bushy. We have math specialists, and then we have one behavior specialist. And the other thing the contract does not give the right to is a special ed specialist cannot bump a literacy or a math. They can only bump intensive or non-intensive.
So, they can't bump anybody who's a specialist based on where they are?
No.
Now, if you as the administration want to keep them as, say, just, if, you know, if they're great, you want to keep them as a classroom para. But did they have to be their seniority in time? They have to be at a lower salary?
Their seniority stays, but they are at the, the compensation level of that particular level of para professional.
So, you can't keep them all on salary in a.
No, the, the, the compensation is.
Based on the job description.
For a certain grade level or.
Job description, or however you want to describe that.
Any questions, any other discussion? All right. So, all in favor of acting on the seven-three-one reduction force?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Any abstains?
Staying.
Okay. So, motion carries, three to one, to one. So. Okay. Seven-three-two, hire the new school counselor? Yep. No, I.
Sure. I think we have to make a motion first.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve, right, we, we got that emailed out by, by Sandy.
Yep.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for the school counselor position.
Second? Okay, discussion? Do you have news for us? It's late.
So, Katie Tyler, Catherine Tyler. She actually has worked at Shelburne Community School before in our behavior, as I think a behaviorist. And she worked for the Howard Center. She's well-versed in, in school counseling, even though a young, young employee, so we welcome her. She was actually there today, and she helped with our first kindergarten registration, and it was like old home week because everybody knows her and really is happy to see her back. So, I would ask that you accept her nomination.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Last is job share request. And I believe this is the first second grade team. Make a motion to consider the job share proposal, or ask for a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the job share proposal. This is Hazen Maitland, is that the?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Do you folks approve of this?
We are in favor, I think.
Yes.
Definitely a win for us in this particular situation.
Yeah.
Who has the job?
Whose job is it? Diana?
Diane Hanson.
Diane Hanson's job, and then she, Linda takes two days as the job share.
How many years does that have David doing this? Three?
Nine, according to the letter.
Since two thousand and six.
Oh, that's right, nine.
A long time. It's, it's actually a very successful situation.
They had several letters from parents, and they were supporting it.
And if you recall, last year I did a little, a little study, and we looked to see whether it was still effective, effective for kids, and it, it was, so.
So, I, you know, I mean, I've voted to approve this for eight or nine years now. But I think that, you know, we, we've learned a few things that actually were, were kind of not following policy, that this sort of thing, I think, we said was supposed to be done in October.
And that's not, no fault of theirs. No.
No, I, I, I understand that, but that, you know, technically, you know, from a policy that's fourteen years old. And part of the conversation that we had at the SU meeting tonight was that generally, the administration, or I should say at least the superintendent, doesn't really like these open-ended, you know, and this was done, and even, even the, the letter says, this was done so I could raise my young children, but it's been going on for nine years, and that. could raise my young children, but it's been going on for nine years, and that while this one works, it's arguably not the ideal situation. And so, perhaps next year, the SU and Shelburne, we will have fleshed out our policy a little bit more and decide, and, you know, at some point, ask ourselves and then answer the question, is this something that, you know, is going to continue forever, or as long as they want, or, you know, should there be some sort of a timeframe on it? And if the original reason for having this job share is no longer valid, then should we continue to approve it?
I will just say that having read their proposal, that I'm impressed, you know, around, you know, that they're both going to be present for summer conferences, that they both attend all parent-teacher conferences, they'll both attend curriculum nights, they'll both attend all team events, they'll both be available to address...
No one questions that they've done a great job with it.
Wouldn't it be great if we could get this from everybody?
Right.
Right, here's what, here's what I guarantee. Hand in the fire, I will do these things. So, I kind of read that and was chuckling to myself that...
As part of the negotiating committee, there are contractual issues and bumping issues and things that, you know, start to enter into these...
You know, even just practically speaking, and I hope you will approve this, you know, but even practically speaking, when you think about Linda Maitland, who's an excellent teacher, she is gaining no seniority in this arrangement. If something happened tomorrow, or next week, or next year, she'd get ripped. That's kind of sad, when you think about, you have a good person. So, that's the other piece, you know, we're not doing anybody a favor if we keep putting them in a situation where, at the end of the day, when they're ready to go back full-time, they have, they're the least senior person.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries.
That's the one he could vote for.
Yeah, he's voted for two in a row. Give him a break, come on. He hired a school counselor. I get section 8.0, approval of the consent agenda, get a motion to approve that?
So...
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? None, motion carries. Next date, our next meeting is the 14th, retreat's on the 30th. Russ Haddick question is, are the local districts in the morning and the SUs in the afternoon?
We'll do the same as we did last year. I suppose.
You guys enjoy your afternoon on the beach.
Oh, no, you can stay. We would be so happy if you stayed.
It's fascinating.
You're welcome to stay, however, enjoy your afternoon on the beach. I think that's it. Oh, and our business meeting on the 25th, and I promise not to miss the next board chairs meeting on the 15th.
Oh, good, 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 glad to hear that.
I missed the one in March.
That's Tuesday. That's Tuesday. Coming right up.
Yep, 15th, next week. All right, so, we will adjourn to go into executive session.
You can motion to do that.
I'd like to get a motion to adjourn to go to executive session.
Actually, not adjourned yet. You've got a motion to go into executive session, and then, you'll adjourn afterwards.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing administrative reviews, and that we then adjourn coming out of the executive session.
Okay.
And we'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you.